Third, 2024 St. Clair City Council Meeting to order. Abby, please call the rule.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubella?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamation and presentation. We have the Waterfront Environmental Committee Scholarship check presentation. I know we have Sharon here, so come on up. I think we have a couple. Erin's here. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Yes, pull that mic down. There you go. And introduce everybody. And I know that we've got Linda's going to represent Lock St. Clair Kiwanis, and we've got Chuck Belastri going to represent the Lions Club with the check presentation.
Yes. So, thank you. You just did my first part.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. That was wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you. And we have Capri here, who is going to be awarded the scholarship tonight. She was just such a great volunteer. She worked so hard at the Bio Squail, and she worked with Erin at the I-94 cleanup. I just want to say a little bit about the scholarship program because I definitely want students applying. Since 2007, we've been able to give over $21,500 in scholarship money to over, to 45 students. The committee has been very fortunate to have very generous donors, and we currently have the Lock St. Clair and the Lions Club both presenting to this and donating to this grant this time. And I do want to say we have lots of volunteer opportunities coming up. Just this next month, on the 8th, we have the beginning of the I-94 cleanup program again. This will be Erin's 20th year doing this program. So, and we'll have on June 15th and 16th will be the two garden projects at Kite Monroe. Any students are welcome. We very much appreciate that. Tonight, we have one outstanding student who will receive a scholarship as a result of donations. We have Capri Riley. She's from South Lake High School. Capri is an East Point resident, but she's a senior at South Lake High School. She volunteered extensively for our committee's I-94 cleanups, our Bio Squail project at Kite Monroe. She comes highly recommended by her teacher Tara Lingeman, who described her as an excellent, dedicated student. Capri has been a member of the Student Council and the National Honor Society and writes for the school newspaper. One of the things that the teacher had also put in her statement was that she is very motivated and a self-starter, and that was definitely the case when she was working with me. She was just excellent, and I knew I could count on her. So, it was always a pleasure to have her. Okay, so we have the Lions Club, who has an emphasis on vision, hearing, humanitarian outreach, community action, and civic pride, environmental action. And also contributing is the Lock St. Clair Kiwanis Club with its representative Linda Burgess. Kiwanis is a global service organization dedicated to improving the one child and one community at a time. The Lock St. Clair Kiwanis has a number of great events in St. Clair Shores, and we are very fortunate to have both of these organizations.
And before we do the check presentation, I didn't know if Chuck or Linda wanted to say a little bit more about these wonderful organizations.
I'll just say that the funds for this donation or the scholarship come from our environmental action initiative. It's a budgeted agenda, and, you know, we support anything that promotes good environment, actions on good environment, and speaks to good environment.
Thank you.
I'll just say that I've been a part of Kiwanis for many years now, and Lock St. Clair and Shorewood, and our, our goal is children. Our goal is for kids, and this, Capri, has really shown that she is deserving of this reward, so we're very happy.
So, just to keep it simple, I really wanted to thank these people just for giving me their scholarship and the opportunity that I had to be a part of, just helping out, really made me want to get more into it and help my community more.
Thank you.
On to the big check presentation.
Come on up there. Be great. Have Capri in the middle there, and the checks on each side.
And then there's no microphone or anything, so I guess we just...
We can hear.
So, hey, I guess we're, are we doing that?
All right, look over here. Smile. All right, and then we're going to do one face. There, everyone's there.
She's going to get it.
Oh, the selfie. Very important.
Capri family. Oh, yeah. So, thank you. Like a little publisher's clearinghouse, right?
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Waterfront Community, Environmental Committee. We appreciate it. And the Lions. And the Lock St. Clair Kiwanis. Item three, audience participation on the agenda items, two minutes. Do we have any?
Yes, we have one, Erin Liberty, speaking on Agenda Items Five and Eight, and she's a St. Clair Shores resident.
Yes.
Is there anybody else, do you think?
Nope, you're the only one.
Okay, cool. Just sat in the water. Didn't really, item number five was the fiscal year budget and millage rate, and I know in the past I have been concerned about the millage rate because I probably remember the charts, and there's a couple millages on our, on our taxes, our property taxes, that are just kind of going out of control. I was just recently on a phone call with the court case with DTE and Consumers Energy, where they're proposing a rate increase as well. And there was many people on that phone call, and there's really no business processes that stop the water, electric, gas from, you know, curbing their expenses. And as, as you all know, from government budgeting 101 classes, Clint Moran did one of those classes here, that when you have, you know, water main breaks or, or increases in costs of, again, water, gas, and electric, those costs just get put right onto the bill. And according to the law, we taxpayers have to pay it. And then if you can't pay it, you know, it's on your property taxes, and you could risk losing your home in, in the end if you don't find a way to pay it. But again, I bring up this issue because, I mean, we can look around here, there's a lot of projects, the water main projects all over here, and we're, I just, I'm wondering if we're going to get a whopping water bill because of all of these projects. I guess I just, I wanted to say, if there's any way that you can figure out a way to curb some of these costs, because again, it just goes right to us, all of these increases, taxpayers can't do it, and there's got to be some way to curb it instead of just dumping it on us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we just had one, so we'll move on to item four, is request to approve the fiscal year 2324 budget amendments. Renee and Dustin? Good evening, Renee. How are you?
Good evening. I'm fine. How are you?
Tell us about the 2408 budget amendment.
Each year towards the end of the fiscal year, we go through the whole, all the different funds, different accounts, and look and see where we're at, at the end of the year to make sure that we're going to be within our budget before the end of the year. And Dustin and I did get together and go through. We didn't get through the whole, everything. We went through the general fund and a couple other funds, and we're going to continue the process and bring the rest of the budget amendments at the next meeting, but this is mostly the general fund. Had some changes here, just to kind of clean some things up and get us in line for the end of the year. This will affect the fund balance by $471,000, a decrease to the fund balance for the general fund, as you can see from the attachment, and it is all detailed there. I can answer, answer any questions if you had any specific questions. But also, we are, we did need to increase the rubbish fund, fund expenditures by $65,000 for pest control, and the library is a net zero change. It's just kind of cleaning some things up with the project that's not going to get started until next fiscal year. It's in next year's budget, so we just kind of took it out of this year's just to clean that all up. So, with that being said, I'm just recommending the budget amendments as presented. If you have any questions.
So, the, the fire overtime is up, workers' comp is up. Is there a correlation between the two?
Yeah, there is. We have had a lot of injuries this year, so we've had extra expense as far as the medical costs and also, you know, just being short and then having to call in other firefighters to cover. And it's not just firefighters, but that is one of the areas where it is quite, quite noticeable.
Questions? Mr. Karen? What's our fund balance at today?
Um, you know what? I don't know.
Okay.
About 18 million.
So, here's, I mean, I'm sorry, what'd you just say?
Approximately 18, 17 to 18 million, maybe in there.
Wow, because that's interesting, because our budget says it's 14.4 million.
Oh, 14.4. All right. I'm sorry. Well, that's before, yeah, I'm thinking back before we did some of the other amendments that we've done throughout the year.
So, at the end of our last budget year, it was at 18 million. That includes all the numbers that are reserved for our committees and/or any of the money that was also restricted, but our current fund balance is right around the 14 million that is in your budget that is presented today.
And that 14 million is reflected of the 2.5 million of budget amendments we've already approved this year?
That is correct.
It does, yes.
Yep. So, I get, yes, I'm trying to remember, in 12, 13 years of doing this, I recall us doing budget amendments just to make sure the numbers came out right at the end. And at first, I was thinking it was like, because I asked for financial reports, the last one we received was from February, and I pointed out the budget meeting, fire was over on overtime, pool was over budget, and so I thought that's kind of what drove it. And they were saying, no, it's a systematic process. Well, everyone's over, and you're asking us to approve it, and there's no offsets. It's, they spent it, let's approve it. No? Other questions?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Frederick and support. You have a question? There's no support for that at this point. Mr. Bello?
You mentioned a little bit earlier about going over something with the city manager and then bringing it back to our next meeting. I thought that's what I heard you said.
We had gone through the general fund and part of the funds. We hadn't gone through the whole, all the different funds. So, this is just, this is the first phase of the budget amendments. We will have some more.
Sorry, yeah. This is the budget amendment for the entire general fund expenditures. This does not include the water, sewer, and any of the, so we, in here, you'll see the general fund, you got library, we got rubbish. What has not been determined is our streets, water, sewer, and the budget amendments for those accounts that are, and golf course as well. But anything that's in the general fund is all in here, and it's already accurate.
Is what Mr. Karen said, I wasn't, haven't been around for that long. Have we ever balanced the budget like that before?
Well, we have to be within budget when we go to the audit.
We have to be in budget, but like, from what he's talking about.
This is required for the audit. If not, then the, the funds would be overbalanced, so we would have to, required for the audit is to have our numbers come in accurate.
Right.
And the money currently has been spent here.
That is correct.
It has.
Yep. Mr. Vitale?
What are the, if this isn't passed tonight, what would be the net result? Would it be, it sounds like with offsets that there may be support to pass it. So, do we feel we can find offsets?
Well, we might be, we did go through all, pretty much everything for the general fund.
So, in order, when, when we go through, and any community goes through their general fund funds, we have to make sure that we are within budget for the audit. So, any of the accounts that are going to be under by 4,000, 5,000 line items here or there, we're not going to ask for a budget amendment to change those. That's why when you get your final end of the year audit, it's not going to show that we have decreased our fund balance by the 2.186 million dollars. It's going to have all those additional funds. We have to make sure that when the audit looks at this, that per department, none of the departments come in over budget. So, this right here is on the budget amendment to make sure that all the accounts ideally fall within the budget amount.
So, this is money that comes from?
This is a conservative estimate.
This is money that comes from the surplus?
Yes.
General fund surplus.
And then this is, you know, if there are extra revenues, it would offset this, but we don't have that specifically. We don't know, like, the way that, what the rest of the year will turn out. There could be some extra revenue from some of the interest income, some of the revenue sharing could come in a little bit higher. So, there's some different areas where it could come in higher, but I'm, I don't know that specifically, so I'm not stating that without knowing factually.
And we're required to give a conservative estimate here, as I've mentioned before. So, when we have, I'll say, for example, I'm going to use the police department budget, there are some expenditures in the police department's budget that we know aren't going to hit their individual line items. So, could we, under, so could we came to you and said, hey, ideally, we think we're going to be $20,000 to the good on the police department budget? We could have, but we're still being conservative because there's still a month left. If we ask you to amend the budget down, and then we have an issue where we have an intense amount of overtime and people take off, or we have a purchase that we have to make before the end of the year, now we're over budget in that account, and that will dock us on our audit. So, this is making sure that none of our audits into the individual departments come in over budget. This is putting us in to where we will be in compliance with our audit with no, and ideally, with, you can't really predict the last month of, of work or any issues that could arise, but this is what the budget amendment is for currently, and that's why every year when you guys do your budget amendments, it always looks like, hey, we're digging in, and this one's significantly higher than normal, and that is truly because, if you remember last year during the budget, we said we're not going to budget for the police pump, or the pool pump house, that we plan on utilizing the money that we receive from these land sale, and then we would do a budget amendment for that project. That was, came from the budget amendment last year. So, we didn't budget for this. $1.7 million of this 2.1 is the pump house at the pool. So, $400,000 is what we are anticipating as the increase, which is very close to what most of the budget amendments are in the past few years.
We'll have the other departments in front of us at the next meeting?
The only ones that, so this is all general fund. So, this is police, fire, communications, assessing, clerks, everything. The only thing that's not in here is our streets, water, sewer, and that'll be at your next meeting. Yes. Those aren't coming out of the general funds. They don't touch your general fund fund balance. They're auditing the numbers to make sure, and we have fund balances in our streets, we have fund balance in our sewer, water, and sanitation and all of those as well. But those budgets are in a different situation than what our general fund is.
Okay. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. One of the numbers, one of the higher numbers is 155K for pool temporary.
How did that happen?
If you look at the packet that was approached, it kind of showed what our pool raises are, rates are. If you go back and look at last year's actuals, they're very similar, that as well. Council in 2022, they get lifeguards, ended up raising the rates for our lifeguards from $11 per hour up to $16 per hour, as well as council approved adding the operations of our swimming pool up to nine o'clock instead of eight o'clock. And then council also authorized a new slide, which required per state to have the lifeguards on duty, one additional person to be able to be on the slide. That additional cost allocated from council's requirement to operate the pool has led to what the actual costs are to be able to have the amount of lifeguards on duty per hour that we are operating.
Boating temporary, 27K.
Yeah.
How did that happen?
Boating is split, so as part of boating's operation, I mean, I could get you the detail on that, but it was over budget based on, so boating is also the gate guards at Blossom Heath and at Lock St. Clair, and we stayed open an additional 12 week, or sorry, four, two weeks. We usually closed down, previous operations was to close down the boat docks on October 15th, and we ended up staying open till November 1st because of the weather.
We added a person to them?
Let's just, one at a time. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Boards and commissions, miscellaneous special activities, 60,000. What miscellaneous special activities? It's the first line item.
Yep. This was an item that was normally in Parks and Rec, and it was moved over to the boards and commissions, and hadn't, for some reason, it wasn't budgeted in either place, is what we found out when, as we were going through everything, and we needed to move it into this department, and it had not been budgeted, and it covers the different activities.
Fireworks, Halloween, those activities.
Like the activities committee?
Yeah, it is.
Activities committee, yeah.
There's three funds to the activities. One is Halloween, one is special activities, and the other one is the...
So, these are additional activities? These are just the activities we have every year annually?
They are.
And they've never been in the budget?
No, they're, they're in the account. She's moving it now to the boards and commission side. It was always there. There was always three funds in the activities account, and this is one of them.
Yes. So, they were, up until last year, they were being budgeted into the Parks and Recreation. As part of cleaning up the event process to be able to get those, they are moved to the activities, because that's, and all of our committees have to be run through the general fund now, and because they're run through the general fund, we have, they all have their own fund balances, and they're kept separate through the finance department. So, you can actually see how much the activities, the parade, all of them are utilizing. They have their own account that's subject to the general fund, but held without the general fund. A lot of those funds were being budgeted within the Parks and Recreation Department rather than through some of these funds, and this is cleaning it up so we can make sure that the funds are deducted by the proper amount of, so say, for example, if the activities decides to do a project, it's actually billed right to the activities committee, so it's coming out of their fund balance.
Is there an offset then, where we're decreasing another fund, we're just, this is just a transfer?
So, there isn't, because this was not budgeted as part of, when we did the budget last year in 2023.
But I thought it was just a transfer, though, to clean up the process. How, where's this 60 grand coming from then? Shouldn't another account be decreasing, not the rainy day fund extra, but another account that we have budgeted be decreasing by the 60 grand if we're just transferring? John's nodding, so I know I must be on a decent track if he's nodding.
So, it wasn't, as we said originally, it was not budgeted in the account at all. So, through Parks and Recreation, when we did the budget last year, we did not budget. It was one of those things that, just in the past, it was always just a number thrown in rather than actually budgeting per what events go on. It's, oh, let's look at the past history and say, oh, we normally spend 108,000, we're just going to budget 180,000, and we're going to keep all the numbers the same. We went through line item by line item when we did the 2023 budget that was sent to council. These events, because they came out of the activities committee, wasn't budgeted in the Parks and Recreation Committee, so it was already reduced by that amount. When we started billing for them, it was realized that, hey, we don't have an account for them, so we still have to show those accounts being deducted per the audit, that they are being spent. However, these right here are per, each one of our activities committees have their own fund balance within our current fund balance. These numbers will be deducted based on if the activities committee spent more than what they brought in, it'll be deducted from the activities committee. And I believe the activities committee funded the flooring and the...
The Halloween account actually paid for that, for the flooring under the pavilion.
The pavilion. That was a big portion.
The band, the band stage, right?
Correct.
Which the Halloween event doesn't utilize, but that was a committee decision.
So, because our fund balances...
More than a year ago, I think.
Yeah.
Because our fund balances are part of our general fund's fund balances, they're restricted accounts, that money still has to come out of the general fund, but it'll come out of the restricted account fund balance, not out of the overall general fund's fund balance.
In terms of the nets departments, we're going to begin at the nets meeting, I honestly would rather just have them all on one meeting together if they're all going to be impacting the rainy day fund, so we know what the overall hit is, but that would be my preference, because do we have an idea of what it's going to be? I mean, we might have some intra, I guess, account transfers in between some of the other accounts. By what I imagine, there's going to be rainy day funds needed to offset some of the overages, because I assume we're going to have overages, correct?
That with that to general fund, that'll be no. If we're not.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, the, the true offset, I think, for this is, is the land that we've been trying to sell, which is now listed at 1.1 million. So, I would assume, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, if, if that land does get sold, that that money would go, money would go into general fund to offset this as well as some extra.
It would go into the general fund to, it would be up to council's direction, but any of the sale would go into revenue, which if not spent, would either offset the account if we were to sell it next week, or if it was sold next year, then it would be put into the general fund fund balance, which would replenish this account.
I mean, some of this thinking was because we thought we had it sold last year.
That is correct. Yep. And that was the direction of, of council was to, because we thought we were going to sell the land, to not budget for the pump house, because if we would have budgeted for the pump house, it would have put the budget at a deficit going in, so it was recommended not to budget for the pump house, which, once again, accounts for the 1.7 million dollars of the 2.1 million dollar deficit, a little over 1.7.
Okay.
That was, been already approved at another previous council meeting.
Mr. Karen? So, since, I think, well, first, just one technical question. The, the change in the police wages to basically, looks like creating a separate line for command, is that correct?
Well, when we budgeted it, we did put it as a separate line, but then as it was going through our general ledger, it all was going through one line, so I'm combining it back to one line, just to make it cleaner looking.
Okay.
So, it's a net change.
All right. So, if we've gone through all the other budgets, and let's use the, you know, if we're not going to be, a line item's not going to be, you know, 5,000 over, you know, if there's plenty of line items that are 5,000 or more or less, and we have accurate numbers, at least through May, why aren't we documenting those so we have a better idea where we're going to come in before we approve another 478,000?
So, we're not approving another 471. This is money that's already been spent. So, this money has already been...
You're asking us to approve money you've already spent, correct? That's what you're asking us to approve tonight, is to approve money you've already spent, so it doesn't show up as an audit thing.
Yes.
Okay. So, so to basically offset the 471, come back to us at the next meeting with the other departments where they're not projected to spend over, and you can be conservative on what you want to take out of those, so we can see that there's some offset here.
I, I would tell you, council, I do not, I do not feel comfortable bringing back any of that, because I would rather it be a conservative estimate, that when the final budget, and this is nothing different... is nothing different than, this is nothing different.
We're 11 months into the year.
I understand.
Much more conservative can you get? Unless we don't have the numbers. Cause here, there's another thing. Granted, the only ones I've seen is back in February. But you know, it's a charter requirement. Council receive financial reports, both income and expenses. Have we been receiving those? No, we have not. That's a charter requirement. So if you've got numbers, I want to start seeing them. I want to start seeing the financial reports that we've been getting month after month for years.
We will make sure.
If you're going to be asking us to approve money that's already spent.
We will make sure finance number, finance department gets you this, but this is.
And the other thing, in terms of the money already spent, of something that staff maybe needs to take a little heart. Had a conversation department had over a small expense, $2,000 for ice cream, that the pool bought in April, even though we weren't opening Memorial Day. Granted, $2,000, not much, but we bought it in April, when you knew it was way over budget. For the hold for two months? You know, it, people have got to start looking at what they're spending, especially if they're going to be way over. That's a department has a responsible to do. So that's kind of why I'm very skeptical of any numbers that are coming in front, in front of us tonight.
Okay.
So back to, so let me just, because you're showing the worst case scenario because there, there are, there are accounts here. I mean, this is it all in, you're, you're basically, you didn't say it to Mr. Karen, but you're gonna, you're waiting for the audit to clear all that out, right?
Correct.
And, and he's kind of asking, hey, can I have some of the numbers now? And you don't feel comfortable, uh, providing some of those numbers. And can you tell us a little bit more why you're not comfortable? Cause I do, it's all going to come out. The audit ends up being some, somewhere in September, October, we understand, and it comes, it's presented in December, but it usually ends, ends up, I mean, a lot closer.
Correct. So it's not that I don't feel comfortable providing those numbers, but if we make a budget amendment and we change those numbers, and I'm, I'll use police for an example. So we have a $8 million budget. And if I feel, hey, we're going to be $100,000 under, the margin of error is still very, very close to saying, hey, we're $100,000 under budget for this year. If, if we make that budget amendment where I feel confident, we're going to make, say, save 100,000 and I reduce it by 100,000, I reduce assessing by 20,000, I reduce the clerks by 80,000, and I reduce everything, this number's going to look a lot better. Anything happens before that time, we're going to get docked on the audit because we went over budget per account. So every account that we go over, the audit is going to dock us. So this is nothing different than any other budget amendment that has been brought before you. And that's why when we normally look at the budget amendment, if you look at last year's, and, and I don't have the exact numbers from last year's budget amendments, but if you look at the number that was given and where we ended up coming in at was different because like, as Renee had mentioned, we are going to come in, under budget in every one of these accounts. That's our basis. Now, like I said, there's something very fluky could happen and we have a big spike in the next month. Very, very unlikely. But this is the worst case scenario as the mayor has said. This also doesn't take into consideration any additional revenue that we may have been receiving as well. Because if we hit our revenue numbers and come higher, which we notoriously do, then it's not a doc on the audit. So this is a very, very, very conservative approach saying, this is the maximum amount that we are going to spend, which is the 2.186 million dollars, of which, I will stress again, 1.8 million dollars, 1.7, I think, 6.5 was earmarked for the pump house that has already been approved through council. So we are talking in a $40 million budget, $400,000 we are asking for that we might dig into the rainy day that wasn't approved.
On top of the 2.4 million we've already approved as budget amendments throughout this year.
Of, of the pool pump? Yes, correct.
And there are other, there are a couple of other items in there, but.
Yeah.
And in terms of the typical budget amendments that we've seen, they've been typically of, yep, emergency thing happened, needs to get repaired. We know we need to allocate that money. That's typically an amendment. You know, pool house, definitely, right? Needed to get fixed, wasn't budgeted last year, needed to get added. This is going through all the line items where we just overspent and you're asking us to correct that. That's what I don't remember us having to do in the past. Because even when we budget, it's a conservative budget in terms of, we assume we have every position filled in every department all year. That typically doesn't happen.
Correct.
Right? And that's typically where we get savings throughout the year.
Right.
And that, and that's all built into the budget we approved.
Yep. So.
Which will help offset some of this, as you know, right? I mean.
Correct.
Well, and that's kind of why I'm asking, like, we're 11 months through the year. Why can't we get estimates of, you know, especially, you know, especially police? It's the largest personnel department we have. And that's typically the one where it has the most savings because of transition of employees.
Correct.
So why can't we just be given that number? So that we have little.
Giving council the estimate. We can't do a budget amendment. I don't feel comfortable doing a budget amendment. And I don't think anybody would be comfortable giving you a budget amendment for that number.
I'd be happy with just getting financial reports.
And, and we'll make sure that finance gets you the budget. I do apologize for that. But as we have mentioned before, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we have had three large turnovers in the finance department. We have been doing a lot of training. We actually, uh, utilized Plant Moran for a little while because we were without a assistant finance director for approximately five months. And then when we finally got an assistant director in here, there was a training curve, which then led to a lot of other positions opening up as well.
We've had turnover before.
Yeah.
And in all that time, I've never gone this many months without getting regular monthly financial reports.
Okay.
Which, by the way, required by the charter.
Mr. Vitale.
Slightly off topic, but it's been raised a couple of times here tonight. We talked about the land sale is what we were counting on to be able to plug that hole in the budget. We reduced the price on it and I think we have additional land now. And I think the consensus was to go back to whoever the deal fell through with, who had a plan and tell them that we were going to change the price and see if they had any interest at that lower price. Did we do that?
They did not. And we have it still listed at what council recommended at, once we received. So.
Okay.
The original price was X. We did reduce it. Once we added the third parcel, we've listed it at 1.1. We have not reduced it since we've added that third parcel. It's still listed on LoopNet at 1.1 million dollars. We have had, uh, a few feelers, um, that came out. We actually had one just actually today. Um, so hopefully that we're starting to get some interest, but once again, we have nothing concrete or no official offers.
From the people who've done the due diligence already and would be the closest to purchase, they're not interested.
They're not interested.
Okay.
Be possible to send an email, uh, tomorrow regarding where maybe some of these numbers are that.
Yeah. And, and I, so with the 471, uh, I want to go over a few different lines. One, fire overtime. This is something that we can't control. We're contractually obligated with minimum staffing and minimum numbers. Um, we have individuals that are on workers comp or on disability and are unable to work. Um, and/or with vacation times that they're required, allowed per contract. That number has came in $120,000 over. Uh, in regards to that also, um, we do have our, uh, insurance workers compensations, which is over as well, uh, because we have had employees that have been on workers comp. So that does account for $150,000 of the 471. Um, and then I'll also mention the pool temporary wages, which is the largest number that is in here, which is $155,000 for the pool temporary wages. Um, when we went back, as Mr. Karen had mentioned at the budget meeting, uh, looking at the old projected budget numbers, which is all we have to go by when we're setting the 2023 budget year, um, information, there was not as much information that was given because the 2022, 23 calendar year wasn't completed at that time. So the only thing we had was 1920, 2021, which was dealing with COVID. And that was also before you guys had made all the changes that council had made in regards to raising up the temporary wages from 11 to 16, before extending the operations for an additional hour, as well as before adding the slide which required an additional lifeguard. Those were all council's directives, um, in there. Taking that into consideration, the number that we are budgeting for next year, as well as the number that this year's actuals are going to come in at, as well as what 2022's numbers were, are almost identical. Um, so it's not necessarily different. It's just, it is the amount that has been spent for the last three years.
Mr. Karen.
Almost like debate rolls where your name gets mentioned, you get a 30 second rebuttal. Um, so, so what's startling about what you just said is that the pool budget, and I'm going to guess, any other budget that relies heavily on temporary employees is not really based on a calculated number. You provided that for this year's budget and the attachments we got. But that's never been like that before. Unlike with salary personnel, where we do have how many there are, at what pay grade, their fringes, all that gets added up, right? Correct. So apparently we never had that for the temporary side. You didn't. That's what we created. Has that been created for every other area that relies on temporary help? Parks and Rec staff, boating, and trying to think if there's another one. I have boating. I could also send that as well. Golf as well. Yeah. So did those end up, they happen to be increased in the budget? Cause you only gave us the increase for, that's later on in this meeting, but for the pool. So, um, ice arena? No, it did not. Um, for pool and boating, both are in here. So both of those are calculated in here. No, I'm talking about next, the next fiscal year budget. Cause the only line item that changed. We were, cause that was all done before this budget. So we were able to calculate those numbers correctly.
Okay.
Yep. But pool was the only one that was significantly off because of how many significant changes were made. There's not a lot of other changes in the other operations as there was in pool.
Frederick.
So I'm not sure, uh, you know, moving forward, I mean, this, this is basically so that the audit, we don't get dinged on the audit, right?
Correct.
And what's the downside of getting dinged on the audit? What happens?
Well, it just doesn't look good.
It doesn't look good. They'll have some type of.
Does it affect our, our, our rates for borrowing money or bonding or?
No, but we, we don't like, we don't like management suggestions, items like that. We don't, you know, no community likes that. That's why they make this so that it, it, the expenses aren't more than what he's trying to.
Exactly.
Right? So I mean.
And so this is, uh, this is basically 471,000 that has already been spent and not much of which I think we've approved, you know, through, uh, in different meetings. So I'm, I'm just wondering why.
Well, I don't think we approved it. I mean, we're, we're proving it now.
Some of this we did, some of this we did. But this is, this is about, uh, we had some of it's already offset in here. And, you know, this, and, you know, the library is just a pass through and the, uh, or a, um, moving it to the next budget year, you know, the rubbish, uh, the, you know, pest control, 65, I don't, you know, is that something we do every year? I haven't seen that before.
Yeah. So the pest control is the rat traps that we do for each community.
Okay.
So that is a budget number that is set, but every year, um, we continually add more and more.
And we have it, and we have that in different funds.
It's a service contract that is approved through council, but we are spending more due to the fact of the more houses that ask for a rat trap, we do go out and provide them. Um, I mean, as a procedural policy, if, if we so choose to say, hey, we need to start removing them, um, after, uh, you know, if there's no, none of the baits been ate after two months, removing them, that's just always been kind of the direction of saying, hey, let's leave them out there longer just so we don't have the rat issue in our community.
And these, these other numbers that you're bringing to the next meeting are not general fund at all, are they?
They're not. No.
So those would not offset a general fund number.
They would not.
Other than a, you know, a total amount offset, something like that. So this is actually something we need to do to make sure that our audit, um, you know, comes within the, the framework of being accurate.
That is correct.
Mr. Vitale, Jerry Pensiloff.
Yeah. The additional hours at the pool, that was, that change was made last year.
Yep.
I'm sure when we made that suggestion, it was that it would pay for itself through more people going to the pool. Is it, is that the outcome?
No, no. So the pool's the money, like.
So by being an hour later, we just lost more money?
That is correct.
Yeah, there's no.
Pools always lost money for decades, as I think we all know.
I understand that, but I would, you know, I, I thought that the intent was to open an hour later, that we would get more numbers and it would at least pay for the extra hour worth of pay. So now it just seems like we open an hour later to lose more money.
Correct. That extra hour costs us approximately $20,000.
Not annually.
Annually.
Okay.
Yeah, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah.
Mr. Rabello.
I think there's been enough said here. I'm sort of uncomfortable at this point with, with saying yes. No fault of your own. There's just a lot of questions. And I think really after, we come back here in two weeks, we sharpen our pencils a little bit, think about some of this stuff. And, um, I'm not interested in getting dinged by any audits either. So, um, I'm not, I just, I feel uncomfortable. There's enough questions going through my head at this point. Um, I, I don't know if I can make a, Ron still have a motion on the table?
No, it's, it's.
I'm going to make a motion to table this and everybody just sort of rethink. You know, everyone's got, I think, some good points here. And, uh, I just feel a little uncomfortable, um, saying yes right now.
We'll support that.
I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've ever done that on a budget, but we got a meeting left. Okay.
So move by Mr. Rabel to table, supported by Mr. Karen. Uh, to table. Any other, no more. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So five to two, it passes the table. So, uh, bring this back at the next meeting along with the, um, water and sewer. Uh, is the council comfortable with Mr. Lent sending an email regarding some of the, uh, items that will, uh, that are positive, we'll call them? Or do you want that brought to the meeting that are ones that are, you know, or will an email suffice that, that, that shows some of the categories where there are going to be, appears to be savings, et cetera? Does an email work?
I would like it brought to the meeting. It's public.
Okay.
Hand, hand an email if possible.
Yeah.
Just give us a heads up.
Okay. Send, and I guess you said already you would send that email. Mr. Vitale, do you have a question?
I, I only did because you just mentioned this, uh, B, C, and D, which all pertain to sanitary water rates, et cetera. Why are we tabling that portion? It's just going to make the next meeting longer.
No, no.
We just tabled the budget amendments for fiscal year 23 and 24 to bring it back to the next meeting with the water and sewer budget.
Make this meeting real short if you want.
That's what I was thinking. All right. My mistake.
You understand, Mr. Lent?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Item five is a public hearing proposal fiscal year 24, 25 budget and millage rates. So we will, uh, we'll open the public hearing, um, on the proposed budget and adoption of the mill, the millage rates, uh, for the fiscal year 24, 25. Do we have anyone who would like to be heard for this public hearing? Ms. Liberty, come on up.
Thank you. Um, I have to, this isn't, this is a public hearing, so I, Erin Liberty, St. Clair Shore's resident. With all of this, this spending conversation and kudos for tabling it, um, it just made me forget, uh, at the very beginning, the two minutes, I forgot to request, um, the consent agenda, which goes in line with this. Um, I was wondering if we can remove, uh, the G, all the blanket purchase orders and just let the public know, cause there's a lot of pages there. Just let the public know what is the blanket purchase order for and, uh, the dollar amount. Cause I believe that that's going to be a huge number. Um, but it, these blanket purchase orders kind of go in line with, uh, we need to get some kind of control on this spending. But, um, onto the, the millage rates, um, I'm probably just going to be, I'll just say it. Um, this was a chart that I did a long time ago, charting out the, the millage rates. I have not updated it at all for 2024, but you can see, you know, actually, before Mike Smith was our city manager, everything was pretty, you know, under control, and then it just went out of control with the millage rates and everything else. Right now, the pension and a couple other millages are surpassing the costs for city operating millages. So again, this goes in line with, we need to really rein in those costs. I worked for a company that was going to be going through bankruptcy, and the accounting department just locked down all of the purchases. I mean, we had to take, make a purchase rack for a box of paper clips and a pen, but they had to rein in the costs. And going back to what I had said in the two minutes at the beginning of the meeting, the, these water rates, I was trying to look at the packet on page 13 of 1,317 pages. The increase says that it's going to be $27.72 a year. After the conversation I heard here, I don't trust that number. Again, with all of the construction that I'm seeing, can we get an actual real number for what those, the water rates are going to be? And is that just $27 for the water rates or sanitary sewer? There were so many pages, just if you guys can clarify it, since it sounds like you're going to be really mashing down on, on the costs around here, which is good, thank you. Yeah, just big concern for all of those costs. I wish I would have prepared a little bit more, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? Public hearing, 5/8, which is to set the millage rates for tax bills. Renee, Dustin? And we did, we did have a budget hearing meeting on April 30 regarding all that's in front of us here.
Correct, and if they're the same millage rates that were presented on April 30, it is a slight reduction from last year because of the millage reduction fraction. Total operating mills is 23.5358 mills, which was, this was all advertised and published according to the state, state law, and there are no changes from what was earlier presented, as I said. But it is a slight decrease from last year of .0882 mills. I know it's very low, but it is, it is a lower millage rate.
Questions, Mr. Vitale.
Is that lower millage rate for the upcoming year, is that due to the increase in assessment on properties?
Yeah, it's the millage reduction fraction that the state says that we, we can only, we can only.
Headly, right. Because everyone's house is worth more, and that's capped at 5%.
Right.
So we're at that full 5%.
We are.
So in order to make our budget, because we're drawing an extra 5%, we're actually lowering the millage.
Yeah, we're following all the different rules as far as setting, that there's a lot, lot more that goes into it.
We don't really set the rate, in a sense.
Right.
State law does.
Yeah, following all that, but it, all that goes into it, you're right.
Okay, so that's just to kind of explain it to residents that the millage rate is actually going to go down because everyone's assessment went up, but that is controlled by state law.
Correct.
So.
The only, Public Act 359 is the only thing that's not subject to headly, just for transparency.
Okay.
Because it is required to be able to cover the pension and retirement costs.
Actuarially driven.
Actuarially driven, that's correct.
Well, we're still down a little bit for that?
We are.
So.
Overall, we're down, yeah.
No?
Well, overall.
Sorry, sorry.
6.3 to 6.497.
I understand, I thought we were talking in regards to the millage. We are in a deficit elimination plan in Act 349.
Okay. 359 is.
Police and fire operating, that's the Public Act 359, so it's police and fire operating, I'm sorry.
Oh, 345.
345 is the, yes, but it's listed here as police and fire.
Okay.
He's looking at this, we're looking at this.
Sorry, different sheets.
Okay.
Mr. Karen.
On that one, the request I had at the budget hearing was the worksheet that's used to calculate the police and fire pension?
Right.
And that, because it's, it's more than just the actuarial report for the pension fund, it's all the healthcare costs and, and some other assumptions are built in there.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten that the last couple of years, so I had asked for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Yep, I can get you that.
And in terms of methodology that was used for that, is, as Mr. Lent had stated, we're in a deficit elimination plan because it had been set arbitrarily too low a couple of years ago. So we, I think, was it last year, was it the first year we had to?
Increase it, yeah.
We're part of an increase a little bit, a little more increase this year, a little more increase next year.
And it should be paid for by end of next, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll have one more.
Set it for three years.
Three years.
This will be the first year of it actually.
Okay, and while the millage rate is lowered, as Councilman Vitale said, everyone's taxable value, if you kept your home, went up 5%. If you just bought and uncapped the home, it went up heck of a lot higher than that. And that's, and it's those uncapped ones that end up driving the headly number down, you know, because we thought, last year, we didn't have a headly reduction because inflation number was so much higher, and headly didn't have to be, there was actually not a gap on the headly for inflation being at 7%. But now that's down to, I think it was a little less than 5% in terms of the headly count, that's kind of why the millage reduction is a little reduced for a lot of those, but it's still $3 million more is what the whole city is going to be charged for the new millage rates because of the taxable value increase. And I think we, we haven't had to deal with that in the past because we haven't had these sub inflation numbers before, right? We're always dealing with.
Yes.
.7, .8, you know, right? But when we're dealing with, you know, 5%, 5%, next year probably 3%, you know, that's significantly more dollars of taxes people are having to pay, so. But I think headly dropped the rates a little bit, but still means the taxes are going up $3 million even with these rates.
And unfortunately, as you know, Mr. Karen, the residents think we collect all of that money, right? Everyone's home's going up, and then we collect all of that.
Oh, that $3 million is just the city.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not, that, right, in terms of the whole tax bill, we're about 41% of it.
Yep, yep.
And that, the other 59% are the schools, state.
Correct.
County.
And they don't realize.
Multer other authorities that are in there.
The zoo. And they don't realize that it rolls back because of headly, so they, you know, they we get it all, as if it was a new home being built, like you get in Macomb Township. Mr. Rabello.
Unless there's any more questions, Sean, make a motion to approve the proposed 2024/25 millage rates as recommended by the finance director and the city manager.
Move by Mr. Rabello. Support. Supported by Mr. Frederick. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero, passes, thank you. Item five B is ordinance amendment to sanitary sewer rates.
So however you do, conduct a rate study and make a determination based on operating needs for our water sewer and storm funds to be able to operate as well as for future needs as far as bigger projects. And so this year, it was determined that for the sewer rate, the treatment charge is not going to change, and this ordinance here is just for the industrial waste charge, which is a flow through that this rate is set by the GLWA. It was increased 2.2%, but this is a flow through to industrial customers, residential customers would, this does not affect them at all, but this needs, this ordinance is just to increase the different charges on the different meter sizes based on the GLWA charges. And we are recommending readiness to serve charge change, but that does not go through on this ordinance, that'll be in the next ordinance. So this, this recommendation is just for the IWC charge, and all the details are included in your packet, if you had any questions.
Mr. Rabello.
Yes, Renee, why is it the businesses that we're targeting with this?
Oh, this is increased flow because that is produced from businesses, and so they are paying for their, what charges they are incurring, you know, it's a cost to process more flow, and so that pass, that gets passed on to the industrial customers.
Typically the ones having, using more water, is that what they're doing?
It's a waste flow that, yeah, that has to be processed.
Okay. Mr. Vitale.
I just want to correct something that Officer Rabello stated, I think accidentally, when he said we're targeting, we, the city, are not targeting anyone. This is a pass through to Great Lakes Water Authority.
Yeah, bad choice of words.
So if we didn't do this, then that would mean the money came from the general fund, which would impact residents.
Sewer fund.
Based on meter size, yeah.
Mr. Karen.
So I guess it's something we haven't talked about in the past, but since there's not a sewer rate change in here, but there is a change to the sewer rate portion of the readiness to serve charge. And we've just never had that called out separately between the two ordinances.
Right, it was just, it's just one total, it shows up in the ordinance as one number, but behind the scenes, it is split up so that it does benefit both funds. But I didn't realize.
Yeah, so, so, since it does kind of feed into this, because even on the water rate charge, the intent is all of the increase to be put on the readiness to serve charge. So it's basically a flat increase for everybody, regardless of usage.
Right.
And at the budget hearings, I said I oppose that. Because we have a lot of fixed income seniors and for, and it's just not Great Lakes increase, it's just not Southeast Macomb sanitary increase, we have our own budgetary increases that are in here, in the budget. So it's just not, we're getting increased fees from other places, we have our own increases in both those budgets. So I don't want people to think that the only increase is coming from the outside. No, we have our own increases as well, it's being, going to be proposed later tonight. So for, for that to be borne by everybody regardless of usage, I just don't think that's fair. And that's, and that's not what we've done in the past. Yeah, we've inched up the readiness to serve charge over the years, but it's been with, where we've had to increase the per unit charge as well in order, you know, to have the revenue to pay for the entire system. So I, I'm.
So to kind of answer some of the rationale is, as you're very familiar, Great Lakes Water Authority charges on a commodity use and a fixed charge. Their fixed charge is approximately 60%, their commodity use is about 40%. At our community currently.
And our Great Lakes charge is only 30% of our water budget.
Yeah, so for our community fixed rates, looking at our surrounding communities, we are recommending $11.05 for water, $15, and I know we're kind of getting into the next conversation, which will be the next ordinance, but $11.05 for water, $15.80 as a fixed fee, which is the lowest rate from all of our surrounding communities as far as going to Gross Point Shores being at 72.21, 72.21, Fraser at 45.48, 30.30, East Point at 36.95, Mount Clemens 33, Harper Woods 34, Gross Point 39.
So what would be the options?
Is $11.05. The main reason we do that is because everybody definitely does use water, but we need to be able to have access to the water, we have to be able to fix the main trunk lines that are coming in when they do break, whether it's a sinkhole from a sewer or a water main break. So because our fixed fees haven't been increased and our commodity fees is, if you, which is once again in everybody's packet, our commodity fee is north, north of the top of those surrounding communities, what we charge as a commodity, we thought it'd be fair to be able to, because once again, our fixed costs aren't changing, our infrastructure is aging, and that is what we want to be able to fix and/or modify.
Okay. We're, do that on a regular basis already. Point is, in the past, we've inched up the readiness to serve charge on top of the per unit charge, so people that did use more, you know, if you had, you know, a single woman widow in her house versus a house with a couple and six kids, you know, why is this the single widow paying the same amount of the increase? This is a debate we've had in the past, we've had this discussion in the past, and we've said that, you know, we would increment, increase the readiness to serve charge, because we do understand there's a greater portion fixed versus per unit in terms of the charges that we've got. But the whole point was is that, so we weren't saddling all the costs on people that used the least water.
And I think these community rates show that we're definitely not doing that, we're the lowest in the fixed costs in the surrounding community.
But if we were to continue with what the AEW rate proposal says, then each minimum charge by 2030 is going to be up to $50 per quarter. Up from 16 today?
No.
Where are we at today, per quarter?
Per quarter.
$19.92.
$19.92, okay. So $30 increase over the next five years. If we were to follow the AEW method.
We're asking right now, just for this year, to increase the fixed cost up to $11.05 and the sanitary up to 15.80.
I'd like to see an alternative proposal that splits it between the fixed charge and the per unit price, which is what I requested back at the April budget session.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you, I agree with Councilman Karen on that. I say that to my discomfort kind of with this proposal at the budget hearing, you know, I was around when we first instituted the readiness to serve charge, when it was a pass through from GLWA, when GLWA took over the operations of the water supply from the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. It was because, well, they did the calculations, they found that 60% fits, 40% not fits, and they weren't gaining enough revenue from selling the water to the communities just off of the use, usage of units that they were able to build because people were utilizing less water, so they had to go to the readiness to serve charge. I think at the beginning was, what, $5 a quarter? It was pretty small, it was about, what, 10, 12 years ago? And now we're looking at, well, let's combine other stuff in here, and it's just been creeping up to the point where currently a resident gets a water bill. I get these questions all the time on Facebook, what's the readiness to serve charge? Before, when we even called it the customer charge, we're getting questions too, where like, well, let's utilize the readiness of language, that's what GLWA utilizes, that's a little bit more accurate, people think customer charge is for issuing a bill, like we're passing on the bill, you know, just, wow, it costs to save that much to bill, and that's not true. Now it's up to $19.92 a quarter, and the proposal jacks it up to $26.85 per quarter, which to me is just unjustifiable. If someone asked me about this on Facebook, I can't explain this. I could stand up for the other ones, there's a lot of fixed costs going in the water supply, it started as the GLW, and I always thought it was just the GLW surcharge, GLW pass through through how they changed their billing mechanisms, and I guess at some point, we started adding on other things, and now we're adding on a whole lot of other things, and I just, I'm not in favor of this type of increase going on people's water bills. Like John said, I don't think it's fair, and I would like to see some other proposals discussed, and I've never seen, is this the first year AEW's been involved in the rates? I don't know if I've.
No, they've done our rates for.
This is the first breakdown I've seen of this charge like this, is that part new?
No, that actually.
No, of the readiness to serve charge?
No, it's been provided in the past years, too.
I don't recall seeing it broken down exactly like this, where it also was accompanying some of the sanitary sewer stuff.
Table three, I guess, has been provided the last two years.
Okay, I, $26 and whatever is a quarter, I think is too high, and I can't support that. I know this is 5B, but 5B implicates 5C, at least based upon the yellow memo, because 5B is sanitary, 5C. So I know, I would like to see. 5B is sanitary, 5C. So I know, I would like to see other proposals for the readiness to serve charge because I think this is too high and people are going to be very unhappy when this starts appearing on their bills. And I think we could do this in different ways.
Other questions? Mr. Rabello?
So we've never done it like this before? We have done it like this before?
Currently, we're already charging a fixed fee for water and a fixed fee for sanitary ourselves. We are recommending adding to that. So it has been done because we're currently doing it now. We're just, rather than putting it all on the commodity fee, because that's what we have done over the past few years, is not put it on the fixed fees because of these arguments that are being stated. We put it only on the commodity. However, as we've all mentioned here again, Great Lakes Water Authority is 60% fixed, 40% commodity. We are north of almost 98% commodity, only 2% fixed. And what ends up happening is if you look at our surrounding communities, that pipe that's servicing this entire row of houses is there. If it breaks, it needs to service everybody, whether they're using five units, 12 units, 24 units. We can also say, you know, we do feel that, hey, the old lady that's on the individual fixed income, I can also play the devil's advocate and say, those individuals that are snowbirds, that are extremely wealthy, that are flying down to Florida for five months, who are now not going to be utilizing any water, are still needing that line to be able to go to their house, still needs to be able to have the infrastructure improved and replaced. That is why you'll see a lot of the communities have a much higher fixed cost because that's what it costs to be able to maintain the infrastructure underground, not necessarily how much water is going to your house. You are being billed for that. That is the water that you're using. But to be able to fix the infrastructure that is underground, that is what that fixed cost. Now, the commodity charge also helps pay for those fixes as well. As Mr. Karen had mentioned, we utilize that money to be able to fix our infrastructure. But what we're looking at today is rather than continue to hit the commodity fee and the commodity fee only, where right now, if you look at just the commodity fee, we are the second highest of all of our surrounding communities, but we are the lowest on the fixed fees. Overall, we are right in the middle. And yeah, that's what the very beginning table shows. You can see where City of St. Clair Shores, price per gallon of water is approximately $2.02. Goes at the highest at Gross Point Shores to $3.47, to the lowest, City of Roseville, at 157. Of that, if you just look at our surrounding communities, you will see significantly where they actually follow the Great Lakes Water Authority's model and do more of a 60% towards fixed costs and a lower cost towards commodity fees. We are the complete opposite. Doesn't seem we have to be like our surrounding communities. I'm not stressing that, but trying to get us a little bit more in line. And we're still, even with that change, we are significantly the cheapest with fixed costs in the surrounding community.
Really, the reason for my questions like that are, I always thought that we did stuff really, in the past, really fiscally responsible stuff. We had our standard, we had our formula, and I just don't want to see that get altered. It's just a very, I guess, conservative way that we were doing stuff financially and that's sort of where I, you know, stand with, you know, changes on this type of stuff. Other things, I'm not, I'm not so standard, but...
Well, we felt like it was a minimal increase of $2.31 a month, but, I mean, I know that could be a burden for some people, but overall, it is a very low increase. But it would be noticeable, definitely.
As, what were you looking at, $26 a month? Is that, is that what you said earlier?
The increase is $2.31. The increase is $2.31 a month.
To the average user.
Okay.
For a residential user, for industrial, commercial, it would be different.
I mean, what would, I guess, what would the alternative to that be? If we were asking...
It's okay.
Is there an alternative to the $2?
Well, we'd have to raise, raise one of the other rates because we do have to increase our, we do have to increase our revenue some. So we would have to increase something else.
Yeah. So if we were to change it and put it all on the commodity instead of the fix, you're going to have the same final number. As for the average user, the fee is going to go up. The two, it'll be the exact same percentage of increase. So the overall money that's coming in is going to be the exact same. It's just, do we apply it as a fixed cost or do we apply it as a commodity charge, which is a user charge, use of water? So the money, the overall count is the same because we're using an average. So we're just saying, here's what the average person uses, here's what the average fixed cost is. So that's per average. However, if you change it all to a commodity, the higher users, the family of six, potentially is going to be utilizing more water than the family of one or the family that's a snowbird and isn't using water. The numbers overall are the same. The amount is going to go up, per estimate would be the same. It's just how do we apply that? I'm recommending, and whatever council wants to choose, I'm just recommending that we get a little bit closer to our surrounding communities and budget more as a fixed cost than a commodity, only because we're significantly low on the fixed cost. I've made my argument why the fixed cost is, in my opinion, a fair method, hence why, like GWLA and a lot of our surrounding communities, have the higher fixed costs because that water main that's going to service our houses is servicing everybody, whether you need the water or not. And if that main breaks, which we have water main breaks, we got to be able to fix those. And how much water you use is just to get you the water to your house. That's why they call it a ready-to-serve. Without that water line being sent to any of the houses or the business, nobody has water.
And what was that called last year?
Customer.
I think it's been ready-to-serve now for a couple of years. I think we changed it maybe...
A year ago.
Yeah, it may have been a year ago. And it's just a terminology and we're looking at, and I know council did ask during the budget session, there are some of our surrounding communities that will actually list on the back and give it more of a definition to, so people understand. We get the questions at $11, but mind you, these other communities are charging 36 to 70 something. They have to get that same question and that same answer. It's to fix the infrastructure. So we just need to be better at communicating to our residents. So up here as councilmen and women, you don't have to answer to those residents. It's coming on the back of their bill. And that is something that I know Matt has already started taking a lead role in and looking at what other communities do, is so we can educate what that readiness to serve fee is. But the final...
So if this is a yes, if this thing turns out to do it, it's a yes, the bill's not going up any higher than what it was going to be anyways?
We're recommending to council a 3.3% increase in totality over the water and sewer rate, which calculates into $2.31 per month, $6.93 per quarter. If that is set, that's what the, the price is going to go up for the average user. There is no, if we have more projects, that the, I said, oh, some, we had a question as, from one of the residents, that it'll go up more. It's not. This is what we're going to set our budget at. Now, if we do have more projects, we could be coming to, we're not going to change the rates, but we might have to use some of our rainy day fund. But this is the rate that will be set for the entire year.
But what Mr. Karen is arguing is that to instead give it a little bit more to the people who use more, they pay more. That's where, that's where it's at, right? That's the issue.
Yeah. It seems like when we tell people to lower their use of water, it comes back a little bit later because their bills still have to be paid and the, you know...
We still have to provide all the infrastructure.
That's what's called the GLEWA problem, right? They have all these enormously, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of assets, yet water declines and they still have to pay these fixed costs. So that's why they have gone to the fixed, fixed rate. And that's, that's the issue that GLEWA faces, whether, you know, and they took it over 10 years ago in 2014, and this is the last year of the grand bargain for them. So who knows what will come next year from GLEWA when their, their, the gloves are off regarding the whole grand bargain that they signed up for, for 10 years, which I would presume will be even higher rates, quite frankly. But that's next year. We're going to have problems this year. So...
Thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So help me out here because Councilman Karen said that we were, we were going to add some money to fixed costs, which I'm assuming our fixed costs for water last year were like $9 then, or 10 or whatever. I didn't look. But looking at the commodities fees versus the fixed fees, commodity fees are significantly higher than the fixed fees. So we are already helping the people who are not using as much water based on how our rates are. If we're at, for water, if we're at 62.30 for the commodity fee and at $11 for the fixed fee, it seems like we are already helping out the person who uses less water.
That is correct. We, that's what we've done in the past. So we've always increased our rate for commodity. And right now, it is significantly leaned towards commodity use.
Right.
Our rates are purely set off of commodity for the most part.
I'm not sure how we would even change this and, and actually help anybody if, if in fact, we're already significantly, even compared to other cities. I mean, the highest on here for, for a fixed fee is Gross Point Shores at $72. We're at 11. I mean, we're even lower than Roseville, which is at 13.40. So I, I think it's still fair. I think we're still in that fair range and maybe this is something we're going to need to look at. You know, if, if we want to charge the household that has six or seven kids even more money, you know, in terms of fairness, like you said, the pipe feeds everybody, right? So it's the readiness to serve pipe. So, you know, I'm comfortable with this. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, you know, completely out of whack. I think we're actually doing our job to help the folks who are maybe not using as much water. So, I mean, I, I would make a motion to approve. Anybody's with me.
Mr. Frederick, support the amendment in front of us, the ordinance amendment to set sanitary sewer rates. Is there support?
What are we going to do then?
So it dies the lack of support. Other, other questions? If not, we'll have to, is it, Mr. Vitale, you have half a pen? It's all up.
You know, just that, you know, I was this close to supporting Ron's motion because, quite frankly, I see an argument either way. The money that has to be raised is essentially the same. It's just the mechanism with which we do it. It seems like since we haven't had raised that fixed cost in a long time and we're overrun with inflation everywhere that it stands to reason the fixed cost is going to go up somewhat too. You don't want to, and the, and the problem is, is that as a single out-of-context statement to say, St. Clair Shores charges so much money for a gallon of water, you can, you can make that argument. And then no one ever comes back and says, yes, but their ready-to-serve charge is the lowest in the tri-county area or something. So no one ever comes back and says that. So it's like, we don't even get credit for it, really. We just get hammered for the cost per, for per gallon of water. We're trying to do the right thing, but, so that's what makes this a very hard decision to make.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just to clarify, the readiness to serve charge, which, you know, again, as we've seen the AEW say, the first time it kind of dawned on us that it was actually split between water and sanitary. I don't know, we've never discussed it like that before. It was just, and I think it was all because when it first started, it was all going to the utility fund. And then when we had to split everything up, we didn't actually split that up. Probably should have. Probably going forward, we should. In terms of, if there is, you know, if we have a calculated number that's a sanitary versus water, then that sanitary readiness to serve ought to be on the sanitary rate going forward ordinance, they have it separated out. But like Councilwoman Rusi said, when we started this, we started at $5 a quarter, right? We're at 19 now. After many years of inching that up, I think, you know, you know, Mr. Land, what we're saying is that we don't want it all to be thrown in to just the lump-sum charge. It's okay for the lump-sum charge to go up some if the rate charge go up some to get the numbers to match, like we've done every other past year. So it's just not all in that bucket. And because we've always been helpful for those that are, use the least amount of water because they're typically fixed income, low income and can't afford it. And they minimize what they use to begin with. So to put that whole charge into that category versus splitting it between the readiness to serve charge and the rate wouldn't be fair in my mind. So again, I'm back to asking for maybe to come back in the next meeting with another financial proposal that does that split and maybe have some offline conversations of what percent to each person makes sense and then what that, the numbers turn out to be.
We can definitely do that. And like I said, I'm just, to me, the mechanism of the, the final number is what we need hit to be able to balance our book. How it gets put to fixed costs and commodities, that's up to council direction. But I do want to make clear, because I think it may seem like every year, we add some to fix and some to commodity. The last two years, it's been purely right to commodity. We haven't touched the fixed cost. So for the last two years, when we've added the increase to the water and the sewer, it's only been to the commodity rate. It wasn't anything to the fixed rate. So this is the first year that we're actually recommending adding to the fixed rate. I'm good with saying, hey, what's going on?
Within the last couple of years, it's the first year.
Yeah. I can say the last two, this will be the first time in the last three years.
Mr. Vitale?
Since it looks like this may end up coming back in front of us again, I'll make a, perhaps a humble, humble suggestion for how much to increase the fixed would be the years that we haven't touched it, where we had, what do we use? Consumer Price Index inflation, 8% or something like that. We had 8% for that year. And if it's 7% this year, then we had 7% down to that. Because it seems to me that maybe one fair formula to divide this baby in half would be to use the rate of inflation to increase the ready-to-serve charge and the rest of the money that we need to raise is borne by the commodity. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
That's the, I mean, that's just seems a fair way offhand is to say, hey, this is being raised by the rate of inflation and this is the balance we need to still collect and that goes into commodity. So that's just a proposal. That's what I would send in an email.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at these proposed rates versus existing rate and it was 10.77 and it's going to 11.05 for water.
Mm-hmm.
It's pennies.
The larger increase was on the sanitary budget.
Right, right. And that's like, and that, I mean, if, if that's where we need to make the change, because I, you know, I, 10.77 to 11.05 doesn't seem like it's that debilitating on the water side anyway. And then sanitary, if we have to do something there, it went from 9.15 to 15.80. 9.15 to 15.80. So that's...
6.50.
Yeah. So that's more significant. So maybe if, if we are coming back, if we're not going to do anything with this today, if it's coming back, then it's, it seems like the sanitary is where you got to look at it. And I like Mr. Vitale's idea of tying this to some sort of index.
So that's going to affect all the way down?
Oh, yeah, for sure. For sure.
All, all the way down to just, no, just 5B, 5C?
Yep.
Right. The goal will still be to have the same amount of revenue.
Same budget, yeah. I was going to make sure that was clear too. So as long as our goal is to end up water to be exactly at the same overall numbers, that doesn't affect the budget. But if it's to change the overall numbers, then we would have to postpone the budget as well.
Right.
So it sounds like that we're going to keep the same numbers, just how we're allocating the numbers and then we can move on. It would just change B and C.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Mine too.
I make motion to table both 5B and 5C.
I'll support that.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Ball opposed.
Seven to zero and B at C.
Storm user charge, fiscal year '25.
Okay. The storms, sewer user charge is set by, the, the method changed after a lawsuit and all, each property was studied and a chart was developed that would give a percentage of pervious and impervious land on each parcel. And so the charges were based on that, those percentages. So the total charges that were needed, the set expenses are spread over the different areas of residential, commercial... of residential, commercial, government, schools, et cetera, as you would have in your packet. And this is how we've done this for the past few years now. And, and it seems to be working well. But there could be questions on this maybe, I don't know.
And to finish up as well, so this does affect us as well. As you can kind of see, we're underneath government. This is our buildings and the rainwater runoff that we have. So that's sixty-two thousand, two ninety, that's within your general government. You'll see scattered throughout the budget, there are storm sewer, or storm water charges. This is where we get charged. Obviously, the city right of ways is one of our fees as well. And then state and county right of ways, those are covered by our Act fifty-one major roads. And then the local roads covers the city right of ways and then we cover the government. So this is actually a fee that we have to charge ourselves as well for any kind of storm water runoff.
Question? Mr. Vitale.
Just one general question. How often do we reassess the runoff on properties?
I, I know Vicki is looking at this every year and making tweaks to it. It's not like fully redone, but she's looking over to make sure there's, you know, things make sense and tuning it in a little bit more every year.
Do we look at permanent applications? Do we look at satellite maps to know what people are doing? What, what, how do we do it?
But she does all that for assessing, so that would follow through.
It's all, as I say, it's through the assessing. Majority of the major changes occur when you actually have a non-pervious acreage or pervious acres changed from a resident, like a use for.
Well, just to use a little more layman's terms with this, I mean, in, in a sense, this is fair because the, the more you pave, the more you pay.
Yes, hundred percent, it's a good look.
Because the more you pave, the more water goes into the storm sewer instead of into the ground. And that's how this charge is determined. So in a sense, it's pretty fair. It's kind of a, I'm sure a pain to administer it, twenty-nine thousand separate households, but, and then all the other properties too. So, okay.
Mr. Karen.
Yeah, I know last year I'd requested the, because this doesn't require an ordinance like the other two to actually include the, the runoff potential rate actually in the motion. So that would be the zero point zero one one eight five eight number would be the rate? That's correct.
Yeah, the runoff potential.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, I make a motion to approve the allocation of storm water fund expenses over all properties based on the rate of zero point zero one one eight five eight as recommended by the finance director and city manager.
Support. Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Robello. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five E, the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Okay, um, according to the city charter and state law, the city must pass an appropriation resolution for the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This budget's made, based on mileage rate, utility rates and user charges as revenues that come in and expenditures that are set. We did have a budget hearings on April thirtieth and we have made some changes since that original budget was presented on April thirtieth. And those changes were included in your packet. Quite minimal actually, but there are, were some changes that were detailed out there for you, some small things that we found that we had missed or needed to change for one reason or another. But the, the budget is balanced. The general fund as presented will have a surplus of one hundred and three thousand, fifty-two dollars. And this would add to the fund balance if this was maintained throughout the whole next year. And the, all the other funds also are showing a, a positive gain to the fund balance.
Mr. Karen.
so it's a bit misleading to say the budget's going to have a hundred thousand dollar surplus because we all know that's not true. We all know we got a large extra expense that's going to be coming down the pipeline, both the police station and the fire station, that we've not gotten any updated financing for. And quite frankly, I haven't had an update on the police station in three months. I don't know, maybe I get kicked off the committee or something, I don't know. But I've seen nothing. So I have no idea where that's going. Last word we had is that police was two point six million over what was allocated. We originally allocated ten point five, they're at thirteen point one million. And fire was also over and they're still working. This is my last understanding again, haven't had an update in three months. So it, it, no way, when, when you know you got those expenses sitting out there waiting, it's kind of hard to say it's, you're going to have a surplus. No, and, you know, and no offense to you, Renee, I know that's what the numbers say. But reality is, we know we got these bigger expenses that we still have to deal with at some point. And I think also it's like, you know, I know there's, you know, back to the pool for capital wise, you know, we were told because we fixed the pump house, that state was going to require other repairs to the main building as well. We have no estimate what that is. And I don't know what other ones we've got out there that will be the surprises as it goes throughout the year. One thing I am sure of, when we get to the end of next year, after we have to spend a significant portion of whatever fund balance we have left after we get done with this fiscal year and after we have to spend a significant amount of that to cover the police and fire difference, you know, we're going to have, a hundred and forty of our employees are going through a contract renewal. First time since we've had all this inflation. And definitely in terms of, you know, like my way to say, it's city, city from, from an annual standpoint lucked out. Those contracts got locked in before the inflation hit. So our police and fire, they've had what, two and a half, three percent raises. You know, while we've had, you know, over the last three years, inflation over twenty percent over those three years. So we know that, that there's going to need to be a makeup there in terms of whatever that number ends up being negotiated. That's going to be a significant expense in the next budget year. And to go into this one with only a hundred thousand dollar on paper gap, it's not enough. It's, now would be the time to actually really figure out what we don't need, what we could live without in order to prep for that. Otherwise, we're going to be in a bad situation two years from now when those contracts come due and those negotiations happen. So in my head, I was thinking we needed to have like a five hundred thousand surplus going into this year? You can get a running start at that? Not a hundred thousand. And I think in terms of some of the other expenses that are in here, I can think off the top of my head that I just don't agree with. I didn't get any more detail on the six vehicles for DPW that I had asked for. I thought that was excessive for DPW to ask for six vehicles because that actually goes into the water rates and water, water and sewer, you know, charges. The one point six million that's in the budget for the twelve mile water main, you know, the rationale we're getting, well, it, it links to St. John's or Ascension on twelve miles. It's a medical facility, they got to have water. Meanwhile, we're, you know, it's weird kind of thing. We're just getting so many breaks for the summer, which seems unusual, whether we're getting water spikes coming in or whatever. But I haven't seen the data on the breaks per water main that we used to get. And that's what we used to use to drive which water mains got replaced. Because of all the reports that we get from Valerie of when we have water main breaks, never heard of one on twelve mile. So it, it's kind of always just made me suspicious of why that was in there. So with that, I'm just not comfortable with the way the budget's being presented.
Other questions? So we need a, a motion either way at, at this point.
I'm going to move to approve, because I think there is some additional to hit the ground running, there is some money between the other funds. Seventy-seven million versus eighty-six million in revenues, right? Seventy-seven in expenditures. So there's about, was it nine, nine, is that a nine million dollar difference? I mean, what, help me out here, is my math incorrect, Dustin?
So the general fund is, is truly the number that we, we really need to look at because when you do major road, I mean, they're kind of piggyback off of both. A lot of those other fees that, John, you mentioned that you wanted to cut, really doesn't help the general fund much. So cutting off twelve mile water main loop affects the water rates, sewer rates potentially.
Yeah, this is the whole budget.
Yeah, but, but saving that five hundred thousand for what you're saying, the additional fees and that kind of stuff, that would be general fund. So our general fund is saving about, looking to net a hundred and three thousand dollars. So that really is all the, you know, the, the balance of the budget. This year, you know, if you, if we need to cut, really majority of this budget is personnel. So personnel, there are, once again, there's things that you could do as well with kind of cutting, whether it's the pool staff or some of the part-time staff and shutting down the pool earlier and that kind of stuff. I mean, there are activities like that, but there's a lot of capital items that were removed from this budget. This budget is getting to be pretty close to bare bones. So there's not really a lot to cut. We had a budget session. There wasn't a lot of suggestions on, hey, we want to cut this. And there was no indication of saying, hey, we want to have a five hundred thousand dollar surplus at the end either. So our goal was to give a balanced budget. We presented a balanced budget with an additional hundred and three thousand dollars and to add to the surplus.
First off, there's a motion made by Mr. Frederick to approve the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget as presented by the city manager and the finance director. Is there support for that motion? Motion dies lack of support, Mr. Robello.
Ask a question here. With some of the stuff that we tabled earlier, how do we, how do we pass this agenda item without figuring the other one out first?
Well, the idea was to keep the, the budgets the same for the, the water and sewer. Just adjust the fees and how it's collected so the total amount is the same in the end.
Ways allocated and collected will be different, but the bottom line of the number will be the same.
Okay, and how do we answer some of the other questions that were asked here?
Such as?
Well, he, Councilman Karen just went through some, a litany of, of things with.
Well, he went through a couple of items that weren't, weren't part of the general fund, although he, he indicated, not to, I don't want to misquote him, right? Said he was hoping for five hundred thousand dollars.
Out of general fund, yes.
Out of the general fund, at this point, it's, it's a hundred and, and three thousand. We need to have this budget passed. We do have another meeting, obviously, but.
I just, I just, again, I'll, I'll say this. I, I'm very comfortable with how things were being done. And I don't remember being in a situation like this, so I get a little uncomfortable. And listen, you got, you've had tough agenda, tough agenda items tonight and you're holding in there tough. And I just, I, I feel, if I feel a little bit uncomfortable with some of this stuff because I've, it, it's just, I'm really conservative. And I, like I said, I think we've had a great formula here in the city for years and years.
Well, that's why we have more than fourteen million in the rainy day fund.
Yes.
And this budget presented is no different than any of the past budgets that we have authorized in the past. Actually, we're adding more money to the fund balance this year than we projected last year.
Do we have, do we have issues coming in front of us regarding the, the police department and fire department? For sure, we, 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 we do. The pool issue that Mr. Karen brought in, it's, we have three years. I believe Agal has given us three years to go back after that building. So I mean, yes, that, those are, those are clearly in, in, in front of us. That doesn't mean that we can't, as the year goes along here, evaluate what we have and, and maybe we will have to make cuts as we go along. I mean, the city's done that years ago and they may have to do that again. It hasn't really made cuts over the years. It's made a tri, by attrition there has been. That's how many times it's been done, by attrition, not filling positions, et, et cetera. But that doesn't mean we can't do that as we go along. Yeah, you keep putting your pens.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to say a big thing here as well that we were asked, actually specifically from Councilman Karen, is to try to budget five hundred thousand dollars for the police and fire for ARPA. We did that.
It's in there.
So if we don't put any of the ARPA money to help pay for those two buildings, we have the five hundred thousand dollar surplus right now.
No, 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 no. So my, my request was.
Hold on, let me, Mr. Karen.
No, no, he, he stated something wrong.
No, Mr. Karen, you're not.
He stated something wrong.
You, you're going to have your chance. Let Mr. Robello has the floor. I, I, I make it very fair. I, I call on everyone, I make it very fair.
I don't like being misstated like he just did.
Then you'll have your chance.
I just, I sort of stated what I, what, how I feel. It's just a feeling, that, that number that we're getting here in five E, how are we going to, to reach that? My, I guess my question is, how do we reach this without reaching the others items? If you could, again, I know you told me one time, but if you can restate that for me.
We'll have to just go back to the drawing board and change our rates, our water and sewer rates, instead of raising it two dollars and thirty-one cents on the readiness to serve, we'll, we'll raise two dollars and thirty-one cents on the commodity charge, which would change who it gets billed to so that maybe it's fair, a little bit fair overall if, on who uses the water. But we still are going to raise the same amount of money.
Correct, the bottom line won't change. Okay. The bottom line won't change. Okay.
No, we can.
Good.
Well, that's the goal.
Hmm, well, wait a second.
Well, we, it might change by twelve cents or something. I mean, I'm going to try to bid it as close as I can, but it might be, there might be some rounding stuff here. It might change very, very, very minimally. But there's always rounding stuff when you're working with big numbers like this.
Mr. Karen.
So to correct what was stated, what I had asked at the budget session was to remove everything associated with the police and fire station out of the budget since we knew it was going to be a large portion of ARPA, it was going to be a large portion of general fund. It also touches water fund, it touches sanitary fund, it touches storm sewer fund, it touches a DLF fund. It did touch the court fund, but that got removed. Don't know why. But I suggest to remove all that so that when those expenses came in, we had it all at one time. It was very clear, we knew what the expenses of the buildings were going to be. Again, hadn't gotten an update in three months on the police, even though I'm supposed to be on the committee. That's what I requested. I did not request five hundred thousand to be put in the budget for that. I requested all of it to get taken out, the exact opposite.
But, Mr. Lent.
I was going to say, so if we take it out, there's five hundred thousand dollar surplus right there.
You didn't have five hundred in there. There's two hundred thousand in fire.
There's more than five.
Well, let's open this thing up right here, Mr. Lent. Let's just open it up.
Yeah.
So police, we have two hundred thousand in capital outlay. And we also have in for rentals, which is the rental for St. Lucys, which is a hundred and fourteen thousand. So in police alone, there's three hundred and fourteen thousand. Plus we have the temporary location build out, which is sixty thousand. So that puts to that three seventy-five. And then for fire, we have kind of the same thing. So we have two, there's three seventy-five right there for police. Fire department, we have a hundred thousand dollars in new buildings, so there's four seventy-five. I'll build out for temporary, thirty-one thousand, so that's the five hundred thousand.
So it's five hundred thousand in police and fire.
And that's in general fund. That's not counting the ancillary accounts that we also put money into in the water, sanitary sewer, that any of the utility funds that will go towards those buildings. General fund alone has five hundred thousand.
DLF too.
Yeah, yeah, doesn't count DLF as well.
Plus a hundred thousand. One oh three.
Okay. Well, Mr. Frederick made a motion that died. At this point, we got a hundred and three thousand dollar surplus that the finance director has put in here for the fiscal year fifty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Lent said, indicated, we'll, we'll round number it. Five hundred thousand is in here for police and fire buildings. We know that we got, we're over at this point, right? And what we have allocated through ARPA and I, we haven't gotten back yet knowing where they stand on that. But that's where. ARPA. And we haven't gotten back yet knowing where they stand on that. But that's where currently... Mr. Vitale?
Since some of these numbers preceding this are not actually going to change, only the mechanism to fund them will change, I am willing to make a motion to accept the proposed budget as presented to us in item 5E.
I'll support that.
Move by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick to adopt the fiscal year 2425 budget as presented, correct, Mr. Vitale?
Correct.
And you, Mr. Frederick? Other questions regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote, Abby. Please. Motion made by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick.
Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
No.
Councilmember Karen?
No.
Councilmember Rubello?
No.
Councilmember Rusi?
No.
Mayor Walby?
Aye. So it does not pass. It fails three, three to four to three. And so with that, we, we need to have that budget back. So you have to bring it back at the next meeting. And if, you've heard some of the, the issues, although it's really been by Mr. Karen. We haven't heard some of the other, by other council members. So I don't know if police and fire, that, that is the answer. But maybe you can get back with some of them to Mr. Lent regarding your issues regarding the, not only the balanced budget, but it had a surplus of 103,000. And then, because he has two weeks to get it there, and then we've not, we need to get that back on the agenda. So everyone, Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Renee, I know that we're investing some of that ARPA money. Do you have any idea where we're at on returns on that?
Yeah, it's all invested, it's earning over 5% right now.
So I mean, some of that money, obviously, is that, is that money baked into this or at all?
No.
All right. So there's some, there's some money we can find right there. So at 5%? And how much, how much did we invest altogether?
We had 15 million.
15 million.
At that point, yeah.
Thanks. Nice job, by the way, investing that.
And I would like to ask too, if, after this meeting, if council could actually say what, like the budget, we've, you know, we presented the budget at the budget session. If there's anything else that council would like to see cut out, because this is what it's gonna be. There's no capital. There's really very limited things in. It has to be into the general fund too. So if we could find things in the general fund that council sees, that they would like to see cut out, please send me some ideas.
Yeah, that's what I tried to say here, right? I mean, we, we obviously got Mr. Karen, but there were other individuals weren't, want to obviously see changes. That's why they, they didn't vote for it. So get back with you, because we, again, we need this on the agenda. We need this approved in the next meeting. All right. Thank you, Renee. Item six, planning case request for approval of 2425 CDBG budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Liz Coto, City Planner, here with Ken Blankenship, our CDBG Coordinator. I'm gonna let Ken take the lead. I just wanted to point out something that Councilwoman Vitale pointed out to me just before the meeting. In the memo, I stated that interfaith volunteer caregivers are proposed to receive $1,000. But in the spreadsheet, it shows that they're to receive $1,480. Because those spreadsheet balances, our proposal is for $1,480 for interfaith caregivers. So I want to apologize for that typo that I made.
I knew I wasn't crazy.
You weren't crazy.
Thank you, Liz.
No, I wanted to make sure you knew you weren't. So I'll let Kenny take over.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ken Blankenship, the city's block grant coordinator, and I'm here to request approval of our 2425 block grant budget. This year, our award was $869,962. So I'll just start it off. If anyone has any questions about the packet, I'd be happy to answer them accordingly.
Okay, okay. So in here, we, we got a memo regarding where, or the allocation of the, of the $869,962. A lot of it is, is the same as it has been in the past regarding section 108 and the home rehabilitation program. We've got money into the senior activity center. And then you have a number of, of groups where we've allocated funding, which we have done over, over the years. Those numbers are pretty much the same as last year. I'm just trying to have you give an update on, on that.
Correct.
They make requests, they go in front of planning, and then planning makes it, and then et cetera.
Correct. Last year, we had 13 sub recipients come before us. This year, we had nine.
Any reason why?
Probably a couple of different things. How we changed our reimbursement from last year. We had found out through the county that, how they request reimbursement, they need to provide more information. So some of the smaller, or smaller sub recipients found it hard to comply with that. So this year, they did not come forward and ask for money this year. So...
And then also, we, we've got administrative costs here, right, which has been, I think been the same for a lo, a long time here. Through, through the CDBG, we have able to do the senior parking lot, right, from money we have captured at that over, over the years. Tell us a little bit about, you got Kite Monroe in here.
Kite Monroe is a new project that we're gonna be doing this year. You want to take the lead on that one?
Sure. As you guys know, we received a land and water conservation fund grant for new lighting at Kite Monroe. There was a, there's a match that was included in that. We received that in 2020, and prices have skyrocketed. So to help offset the cost of the lighting, part of the grant was to also install an ADA playground. So we, block grant can cover that portion of it. And that can also be considered match as well. So it will allow us to buy more lights for the fields. And by more lights, I might, you know, aballast. I mean, it's crazy how expensive it is right now. So that's what the $250,000 is set aside for. And then just as a point of note, one of the reasons why the sub recipients, there were fewer sub recipients this year is because in past years, sub recipients would reimburse us on a per X basis, meaning they would attach a dollar value to their service. So for instance, Carehouse would say, we provided services to nine children at approximately $650 per child. And they base that $650 on the prior year's costs. And HUD doesn't allow that. They only allow actual current costs. And so that made it difficult for some of our sub recipients to continue to, to request funding from us. It's not to say that they can't apply later on, once they kind of have things ironed out. They just have to figure out actual costs and how to bill that to us based on things that we can reimburse for through the program.
Okay. Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I know this year, in some years past, we can fulfill the amount of requests from the charities 100% to the amount they request. Unfortunately, these past few years, we have been unable to do that due to not receiving enough funds to be able to do that, which requires us to reduce the amount we are able to allocate to them below what they request. I know in like last year, I think some of, there was some debate about how to compute this decrease. This year, how was, this year, administration's requests and the planning commission's recommendation were in line. Last year, they were different. Kay, talk a little bit about how the methodology was computed to do the deductions from requests to the proposal for allocation.
Sure. So I believe we funded all of the sub recipients at 56% of the total. I think that was the magic number, with the exception of, oh, Kenny's 54%. Kenny had the number. I didn't. So it's right there, 54.
And interfaith caregivers, they were requesting such a small amount to begin with.
That's exactly it. Yes, yes.
That's why, so everyone's getting quote-quote deducted basically evenly except for the very small requests.
Correct.
And on the proposed budget, there's a little square that I don't recall seeing many times in previous years, if all available to reprogram with some program income, and then also a few of the past year recipients. Is that because they haven't been able to submit the reimbursement request and fulfill some of the paperwork accounting part of the program?
Correct. That's exactly why. Yes.
So what does that mean, reprogram? Can, do we divide that up this year? Or is that, is that shown in this budget? Or, I mean, what does that mean, reprogram?
It means we can use it for other projects, other activities. But you also got to remember, we have to stay under our caps.
Right.
20%, 15%. So that can be, a lot of that should be probably reprogrammed to the senior center parking lot canopy.
Okay. So that already is, the reprogramming is already reflected in this year's proposed budget?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that was an additional money we had available or had to use it this year that's available for us to include in the upcoming fiscal year's budget. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, maybe I'm gonna just say something here that isn't really a question. It's just more something for the education of residents and all that are watching. This community block grant development fund is federal money. Some of that we've used for senior center and other projects for years and years. And a portion of that is also required to go out to charity organizations too, in order to receive the rest of that federal money. So frankly, there is, there's an organization in here that I probably wouldn't have funded, to be honest with you. I'm not gonna go into it or suggest we make changes up here at the table because I should have showed up to the planning commission and made my argument to the planning commission. But I just do want the residents to know that we are now, through federal government funding, going to spend 8,000, over $8,000 of this fund feeding children, which sounds like a noble goal. But we're basically just giving food to children to take home. Tuna, beef ravioli, soup, fruit juices. I mean, when did it become the job of the federal government to feed people's children? And I'm gonna be honest with you. I have friends that work, actually, I have two different people that work in two different school cafeterias. And they tell me that the, what gets thrown away is absolutely criminal. They can't spend the money that the state gives them fast enough because now the state's just buying lunch for everybody. They can't even spend it fast enough. They've already replaced a lot of their capital expenditures and things like that. And they don't even know what to spend the money on anymore because it's so wasteful. And I'm gonna tell you, I bet a lot of these cans of soup and oatmeal and fruit juice are gonna end up going to convenience stores and getting purchased because that's what happened with Flint Water that was donated, and that's what happens to a lot of this stuff. So here's a huge piece of fat, federal government, and we're gonna expand this from being at one school to now three schools. And I don't know if that's, it says three more schools, I think, in one of these. I don't know if that means three more districts, or actually just three more school buildings.
They're trying to do all three districts here in St. Clair Shores.
Yeah, so we're just gonna feed everybody's kids now on your tax dollars. Just remember, everybody, when your water bills go up because we're told to fix costs and everything like that. And, and we're seeing the result of this inflation, it's just pouring money into the economy like, like a wildfire. That now we're gonna get into the business of feeding people's kids too. And it's just going to be completely unaccounted for. We'll never know if it really ever gets into their stomachs. Absolutely ridiculous. But, because quite honestly, you know, I would rather fund all these other organizations without giving them the haircut from the additional $8,100 that we're spending here. But again, not an argument that I'm making necessarily for tonight, but just something to educate the residents in general. I guess I should have gone to the planning and raised the objections there. But I don't think most people understand how this money gets allotted. So I'm kind of trying to wake people up to that, that, you know, you have some very legitimate charitable organizations that because the government has made the reporting standards so onerous, if they practically have to hire somebody else, and oftentimes these charity organizations to do their reporting and how to compute the formulas, that we've now got money on the table that we're just gonna get into the, into the feeding people's kids business. So just making everybody aware. Not an action item.
One thing I do want to make sure, so we, as a city, has chosen in the past to be able to give to these charitable organizations. It is not a requirement from CDBG. We could actually choose to give to none, use the entire money in-house for administration, senior centers, everything. This is something we have chosen to do and earmark X amount of dollars. It is not a requirement from CDBG.
Oh. Well, that's never how it's been explained to me.
Yep.
I have always been told that it was some requirement.
No.
There was a charitable requirement here.
Nope.
Well, then why, when we're in the middle of trying to find money here and there, are we getting into the, the feeding the children business?
So the issue, I'm not saying that we can only spend 20% of this on an annual basis on our, like, wages and fringes. And only, only 15% of this grant can be towards public services. In this case, if you were to eliminate all of the public service organizations here, you could put more money into the senior center. But as Mr. Lent and Kenny and I have done the numbers, we're basically at the point that what the budget amount is, is about how much is being spent by the senior center. So putting more money towards them would not necessarily cover more expenses.
But it'd cover projects.
So we're almost kind of like at the cafeteria employees, where we've got this fire hose of federal money coming at us. We can't spend it enough on our own stuff without just absolutely being wasteful. And now it creates the opportunity for all these other, for all this other waste.
We can spend it on projects that would benefit low to moderate income people, i.e. the playground, the senior center parking lot. So we can, we could obviously still do road paving, so we can offset costs in certain areas.
Or we could even up the amount, well, I guess that, that group didn't take a haircut. But some of the other groups, like, you know, pardon the pun, Wigs for Kids took a haircut. They could be fully funded. And maybe the rest of these organizations could be fully funded. I guess, I, there's nothing in this that tells me what the discussion was in planning. And shame on me, I didn't attend the planning meeting. I should have. Because I had, actually had concerns back when I saw it as draft minutes from the original proposal. But sometimes it gets tough to try to attend every one of these meetings. But, you know, I, I don't see any, I don't see any metrics in this. This is an all-new program. I don't know how they're qualifying these children to just receive this fire hose of food. Six meals for the weekend. You know, like I said, I, maybe now that I have that knowledge going forward that there is more that we can be spending it on in the city, then I guess I'll take a look at that. We've always done this for charity. I've always been under the impression that we had to spend a certain amount of this in charitable. But heck, there's things I can think that would do to improve the quality of life in some of the income-affected areas of the city, just in terms of blight control. So, all right. Well, thank you for the education.
Mr. Rubello.
Yeah, there's some of these things that, that Chris was talking about. I think we've had discussions before about the community development block grant funds. And again, like Chris said, I mean, these were recommended by our planning commission. Okay. So I think I asked you this last year, and we got a little bit of data back on it. And my concern was always how much of this is affecting and concerning our residents in St. Clair Shores. And in this, in this case, I mean, you feel comfortable with what's on this paper, which recommended?
Yes, I feel comfortable with what the planning commission is recommending. As, as you all know, we don't pick and choose what organizations are going to receive funding. We just try to make the allocation as equitable as possible. Side note, we also fully funded Macomb County Grass and Snow per year, guys' requests from prior year. So I wanted to make sure that was told as well. But I feel comfortable moving forward with these organizations. I believe that they will be able to fulfill reporting requirements, which in this case will... be able to fulfill reporting requirements, which in this case will, they have to prove to us that the children who are going home with food in their backpacks over the weekend are low to moderate income. They, they can't just blanket give it out. So there are, you know, some measures in place. Now, can you give your can of soup to your next-door neighbor? I'm never going to know, right?
Mm-hmm, or to the party store to trade it for something else.
I'm never going to know. Yeah. And, 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 and I'm not saying that that doesn't happen, we just, you know, we can put as many safeguards as possible in place, which unfortunately does result in some of these smaller organizations doing exactly what they did this year. They didn't apply for money, because they don't have a full-time person who is able to spend the time and the energy to go through these onerous reporting requirements. It, it is, it's a pain, it's a total pain.
Good, Mr. Rabello. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Going to, well, one, I guess if you want to make the argument, why is the government feeding kids, why is the government having kids play hockey? Because the hockey enabling fund's in here too, and I think feeding kids, and at least in Maslow's hierarchy of needs, feeding kids goes a little bit above hockey, but, you know. Anyway, maybe in the, for, I mean, we have the proposals, we went through the hearing, we have the planning commission recommendation, we have this on our table right now, it's a long meeting, it's something we've done every year in terms, I think may, we might have all been under that assumption, that allocating some of these funds towards some of these programs designed to serve residents from St. Clair Shores, or broader, maybe Macomb County, was part of a requirement from HUD to receive these funds. If that's not the case, maybe in the, for the upcoming year's allocations, we can have some, maybe a little bit more education on council and on the planning commission too, and maybe some planning sessions about maybe reallocating if we want to go forward with that going forward. And I think that might be some discussions worth having, especially now, given that they have changed and up some of the reporting requirements, which I have heard from some of these, I won't even call them really necessarily smaller organizations, look at Care House, which is a pretty important, powerful organization in Macomb County, that helps with forensic interviews of sexually molested children. They do important work, but they're having a hard time, just how they service these children, and how they have to bill and reimburse. They didn't apply because they have a hard time making the paperwork requirement, meaning them to justify being able to apply and being able then to spend the money. And we also, after all that talk last year about how to allocate, and how to give the haircuts, and how to do what, we have some organizations who did receive money, who have been apparently unable to make the requirements to utilize it, which results in the reprogramming. So maybe now, especially due to the changes, maybe it is time to start going forward, talking about how to reallocate the money, so we still use this to benefit residents, just maybe in a different fashion.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Candace on this. This is a, something that the planning commission did spend a lot of time on, and I, you know, I can see the haircuts, I mean, I, I sit on at least one of these boards, and, and I watch how this money is spent, Maggie's Wigs for Kids, I know that, that's spent on kids in St. Clair Shores. And that's, I mean, they, they spend way more than this across the state of Michigan, but to spend it on somebody in St. Clair Shores specifically, and sometimes it's, it's hard for them to do that, right? So, and I know some of these other organizations try to do that as well, and make sure that they're preparing their paperwork in that fashion, and it's checked, it's double-checked. So, I mean, I'd hate to throw all of this out after planning spent all the time that they did. I think if, if we, if we want to give them different direction for next year, then we need to do that. But today, I would just make a motion to approve as presented, support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen to approve the 2024-25 CDBG program as presented. Other questions? Mr. Rabello?
I guess, Liz, when would be a good time, when this rolls around again? Like, when should we have any suggestions then to you? And is it you that takes it back to the planning commission, or is it, I'm not sure how the hierarchy works?
So the, the way that we schedule the, the process on an annual basis is basically at the end of the calendar year, and into January, so end of '24, beginning of '25, we will send out a notification to all the existing organizations we have on a list, and then we put an ad in the paper of when the hearing's going to be, and then anyone else who comes or submits paperwork, they are added to this kind of ongoing list of, of subrecipients. Then the public hearing is usually held sometime in February or March, which are, we are required to do that, we're required to hold the hearing, we are required to allow them to ask for the money. And then, once we get the actual dollar value, that's when I, Kenny and I come back in, figure out how much money we have, how much money we can give, then it goes back to the planning commission. That allocation comes in sometime between March and May, usually.
So we should-
So January.
January, I would say having sort of marching orders for us by January, so that we know how to, you know, direct people, because we can then warn the, the public service organizations, you know, we're not going to be giving out as much, or any, anymore, so, you know, kind of, don't, don't kill yourselves putting together this, right? I mean, because this is just as onerous and tedious on them as the paperwork can be.
Be a study session, lean up to that.
Yeah.
Agreed. It's good idea.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Fall opposed, seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, bids, contracts, purchase order, question to approve the DPW material delivery disposal contract, blanket purchase order. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Each year, the Department of Public Works does a number of purchases in order to operate, and that's what we have in front of you tonight. Jenna Hallam here is our office manager, and she has put out to bid certain purchasing contracts that we have. We try to do multi-year contracts, so you'll see there are some things under consent agenda that were multi-year approved in previous years, that's why it falls under the consent agenda tonight. There also are some items such as rock salt, gas, and diesel, that councils approved at previous meetings, and so the purchase order is just in the consent agenda. So that's why there's a difference between the two. So I'll try to make this really quick, and just answer any questions that you have, we'll run through the items here. The first item that we have is material delivery and disposal, it's basically a trucking contract that we have. Trucking companies bring in to us crushed stone, sand, topsoil, and haul out the, the waste spoils and other items that we need to get rid of, sweepings, things like that. So we're recommending this contract, go for the low bidder, as proposed.
That low bidder being Clancy?
Yes.
And Grosso?
And Grosso.
Yes, and these, these are two vendors that we, we currently use, they do a nice job.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. There is a discrepancy, a discrepancy in the Grosso PO for parts in golf. If you look at the memo, it says parts department, the nine-five is coming from account 101-705. The PO says it's coming from 101-706. And then the requesting department up in the top says 706-755, and if you go department name for the ship-to information, 705 and 855. So the account number needs to be either if it's 705 or 706, and then the department name for golf needs to be 755 instead of 855.
We will make the corrections, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rabello?
You guys have used them before, Brian, you're comfortable with them?
Yes, definitely.
Lowest bidder?
Yes.
They know your system, the whole deal?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve a three-year contract and blanket purchase order for material delivery and disposal to Clancy Excavating Company, 29950 Little McRoseville, Michigan, 48066, in the annual amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, and a two-year contract and blanket purchase order for material delivery and disposal to Grosso Trucking and Supply Company at 115 Marine City in Fairhaven, Michigan, 48023, in the annual amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Support?
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero, thank you. Item B will come back, I presume, at the next agenda, next meeting, request to approve the DPW water sewer repair supplies.
The second item is for repair supplies, and this is the items that are used in the water, storm, and sanitary sewer departments, items such as concrete products, pipes, hydrants, valves, frames and covers, water meters, various parts that we use just in our day-to-day. So this is a bid that we put out annually, and we broke it down into different sections, and are recommending to go with the low bidder in each of those sections.
Questions regarding that? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Another PO correction, this one's in the Core and Main PO. We have budget for, it says ten thousand four hundred dollars, out of account 591-540-930. Yellow memo and add, yellow memo says twenty thousand four hundred, not ten thousand four hundred. The total's correct, but the amount needs to be corrected to be twenty, not ten.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So, Brian, I, I always get excited when you say you're splitting the bid, because that was something we talked about, you know, a few years ago, and I think it saved us a lot of money in the long run. So I would make a motion to award the 24-25 contract and blanket purchase order for repair supplies to Core and Main, the amount of fifty-five four hundred. Aetna Supply, the amount of forty thousand, Ferguson Waterworks, and the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, and Waterworks Metrology, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Support?
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rabello. Question by Mr. Vitale?
Just one thing on here, the hundred thousand dollars for Waterworks Metrology, this is water meters, you know, we're on the verge of talking potentially about replacing that.
Yep.
Do you expect we'll spend the whole hundred thousand dollars, or?
I, I'm not sure, depends on how quickly we get the, the bid out for the water meters, but we are planning on reusing, continuing to use the newer meters that we have out there. So if we, if we spend this money, and-
So it's not the me, it's, the meters themselves will carry on, it's the actual, whatever reports out?
Yeah, some are going to be outdated that we'll want to switch out, but, but yeah, we, these are ones we need just to keep going, day-to-day.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Seven to zero. Item 7D is to request a DPW tree removal contract.
This is for tree removals throughout the city, we've done this, I don't know, probably for four years now, where we have a contractor assist us in tree removals. And on this particular one, we received eleven bids, which we had some really good numbers. We're recommending going with the second lowest bidder. We think that, that particular company, and their, and their bid was only three hundred and fifty-five dollars more than the low bid. But we, we believe they're going to give a better product to our residents, do a better job.
Have you used the low bidder before?
The low bidder, we have, and we have had some, some issues with them. The second low bidder, we also have used, and have been very satisfied with their work.
And the low bidder you use for a year, or two years, or you?
We've used them for, I think, two years.
And you were never satisfied with them?
Yeah, it may have only been a year. Yet there's been some ups and downs, and-
Okay. Mr. Karen?
In terms of when we have them contract to remove a tree, what restoration are they required to do?
They, when they remove a tree, they grind the stump down, remove some of the stump grindings, put topsoil back, and then seed it.
Okay, so that's different than if our, our crew removes a tree? Our crew removes a tree, we put back sod?
Our crew removes a tree, then we give it to our stump grinding contract.
Right.
He grinds the stump and does the lawn restoration after he grinds the stump, that's a separate contract, just the stump grinding alone, for trees that we-
But we have, well, well, we have a separate contract for restoration, right?
We do also have a restoration contract.
Okay, because I know, I've, I've seen two trees on Edmonton that were taken out, two trees on Woodbridge that were taken out, and that basically there's just still dirt, like nothing's grown, in terms of whatever this contractor had restored it to. So, and, and I brought this up before of, why aren't we having the same standard of whether a contractor takes it out, maybe they're saving the grass seed, and we have actual lawn restoration go out, so we don't have residents with a pile of dirt sitting in their front yard?
Hence the reason we're not requesting to go with the lowest bidder.
That's not the lowest bidder, that's this bidder. That's the current bidder, right? Wonsley's the current supplier, right?
No, it's a, a different vendor. But if we can, we will go-
We're not contracted with Wonsley right now?
For tree removals?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's with the-
Trimming?
That's trimming, not, okay.
Yeah, so, but, but we will look at those and try to get those cleaned up. We have been asking them to go back and do a better job at the restoration.
Well, but that's the thing, the restoration, as you described, was just throwing down grass seed, rather than doing sod, where we have a contractor that would go out and do sod. So why wouldn't we just have that contractor go out and do sod?
I don't think you'd want to put sod over a stump grinding area, that's, there's a lot of heat that generates in there, I think you're going to just dry up and burn out that. But they are supposed to-
You just did it across the street from my house, on a property, you, you, the DPW crew did an awesome job, they had to take down a silver maple in order to get access to a water line, for my neighbor across the street. Came through, tree came down, got the water line fixed, stump grinder came by next day, grind that out, haul that out, few weeks later, restoration came out, laid it all down. Looks beautiful.
Who was the contractor, Mr. Karen, that did the restoration? Who has the contractor, or was a part of the tree?
I don't know who did the restoration in terms of the sod.
Okay, okay.
And, and, you know, this is on Chalonne.
Yep.
And that, but, but again, that, that's kind of like, we just did it, and it looks great.
Yeah.
So for these other ones, to where the grindings were, you know, they're required to go down a certain distance, right? They're required to pull all that out, put topsoil back, so it's not, you're not putting sod on top of grindings. You know, so I'm just, same, I, I've asked this before, like, why aren't we having that same level of service, whether a contractor takes out the tree, versus our own crew taking out a tree?
Okay, I, I will look at that-
Okay.
-particular address and see what happened there.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I appreciate the email you had sent, because I had questions too about why you were recommending the second bidder versus lowest bidder. That said, though, the issues you described in the email sound pretty significant, and like they've occurred frequently. If this contractor was not performing to the expectations of you and of the city in terms of providing the service, why do we keep employing this contractor, and why is just this the first we've been hearing about him? I know we've had, like, clean companies in the past that we get an email, hey, the clean company you guys rewarded the contractor to was awful, we need to go with a different clean company. We've done that a few times. And I'm kind of wondering if all of these incidents were occurring as described, why we just kept sending them out there to do this, if their service was not satisfactory to the point where we are no longer recommending them to get the upcoming contract?
Yeah, we've, it's, it's been a matter of having to ask them to come back to correct a lot of these things.
Yeah, and other things too. I'm not, I'm not going to go into the email, I guess, because this is the first I'm hearing about, and I'm not going to badmouth a company when I, this is the first I've heard of, and I, I don't, I trust what you wrote in here, but it's just, man, if these issues were occurring, it sounds like perhaps we should not continue to use this, exist the incumbent company, and instead did something else, like we have done with other contracts, where the contractor was not performing according to our expectations, and the expectations of the contracts.
Mr. Vitale?
Is the low bid company the one that dropped the three-foot tree trunk onto a freshly paved street a few years back?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because that would seem like a reason not to rehire them.
Yeah.
And I think you, I think actually in that case, that might have been, to Ms. Rusi's point, it might have been a straw that broke a camel's back with that contractor. I think after they did that, that was the last tree they cut down in the city.
Yeah.
Anyways, I, so we're going to go with Wonsley now for tree removal, and we'd had Wonsley for tree trimming?
Yes.
You know, I, I've seen their work trimming, it did seem to me like they made particular effort to elevate, and they did a nice job trimming, and actually have had residents even compliment, which almost never happens, the tree trimming, so that, that bodes well for them doing removal. for them doing removal. One thing I would mention, and I would like to, you know, just because I noticed it somewhere, I don't know if you've got what type of breed of tree this is. There is a tree that is on the north side of Nine Mile at Industrial Drive East. So if you're leaving Industrial Drive East, and turning left onto Nine Mile, that tree, whatever breed of variety of tree this is, has branches or leaves that are very low. I mean, like, a foot or two off the ground. And that actually, maybe you don't notice it if you're driving a big truck, but if you're driving a car?
Yeah.
It's so wide, you almost can't see traffic.
Okay.
Uh, and I actually have seen close calls where somebody's turning left from, uh, I don't know what the side street is over there, but the side street next to the Mercedes dealer, I think.
Pallister.
Pallister, or East Lawn, and, and somebody, suddenly, a car appears, because it turned left, you couldn't see it, because you had this wide tree. And I don't know if it's that, I haven't seen trees that grow like that, that kind of have branches down so low. It's a newer tree.
Okay.
Maybe take a look at that one, and then see if we've got more trees like that, that maybe are causing a, a visual issue.
Mr. Rubello?
Thank God Gary Lamanna's not here.
Yeah, it's peach. I got it.
Did someone get that?
Absolutely.
No one got that, just like, no one got my Maslow hierarchy reference.
I will make a motion, Brian, one thing before I make this motion. Are these guys, if, if there's any problems with them, like you had, I mean, those other guys had a great name. If you've got problems with these guys, like you had with ones we were using, are they, do you have to keep going with them, or can you pull the plug on this?
No, yeah, no, we don't have to keep going.
Okay. I will make a motion to award the 2024, 2025 contract blanket purchase order for tree removals to Wansey Tree Service in Alma, Michigan, 4801, in the amount of $100,000. Support.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seven to zero. Request to approve the DPW tree trimming contract.
The next item is for, I'm sorry, that was for tree removal. This, this next item is for tree trimming. And we are, again, recommending going with the second low bidder, Owen Tree Service, who had this contract previously, and did a very nice job for us. Again, the low bidder is the same one we discussed in the previous item.
Questions. Mr. Rubello?
I will make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2027 contract and blanket purchase order for tree trimming by Owen Tree Service at, in 225 North Lake George Road, Attica, Michigan, in the amount of $34,500, from the Street's major department fund account, 202/449/810.060, and $80,500 from Street's local department fund account number 203-449-810.060.
Support. Okay. Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, Brian, just, since this is a, they kind of do the, the whole city in different sections, and that, it looks like this year will be from like eight, roughly Eight Mile to Nine Mile, will be done. Basically, when you get a heads up, when they're going to come into town to do this, typically the fall, though, right? When they normally...
They can, once we're comfortable with the contract, we let them even do it in the winter time.
Okay. So it, it just, whenever they plan on doing it, just work out a couple of weeks with communications beforehand, just to start to blast it out, to let people know, you know, that's coming in their area, and to be courteous with vehicles and that on the streets, in those spaces, so.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Fred, Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Rusi?
Oh, no, I was just going to suggest, maybe that's something going forward, we don't need to include the addresses in the recommended motion, on the same days I'm talking.
Mr. Frederick? Just a quick question, actually more of a statement. So I got a call today from somebody who lives on Pallister, across from Frederick Park, and there, those trees are, are blocking the one no parking sign on the east side of the street. So if we can get that trimmed, and possibly, I was going to do this under comments, but if we can possibly get some more no parking signs, because if somebody does accidentally park there, there's no way to get a fire truck down that street. So, that's something we can do. And then I'll bring up the other one, under comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Yes. Item F is to request the permanent pavement repair materials. 7F.
So th, this item is UPM repaired material, which is what we use to fix potholes. It's essentially cold patch. We had two bids that submitted, the same unit price. We're recommending to go with the company that's closer to St. Clair Shores, to save us some time on picking up this material. And it's the same company that we have used for a number of years. Any questions?
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. What is the location difference of that being cited as a rationale to pick one company over the other?
Troy versus Mount Clemens.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubello? I will make a motion to the board, the 2024-2025 contract and blanket purchase order for UPM pavement repair material to Cadillac Asphalt LLC through June 30th of 2025, in the annual amount of $33,000. Support.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. NMG requests approved motor pool vehicle equipment tires contract.
So this item is for the purchase of tires. We did get four very close and competitive bids. We're recommending going with the second lowest bidder, who is approximately, you know, 200 bucks more than the low bidder. The low bidder is located in Troy. The second low bidder, Leslie Tire Service, is located at 94 and, it's like South River, North River Road, I think it is. We recommend going with them, because this contract's to purchase tires, they deliver them to us, but we also send certain equipment out to their shop, the fire trucks and whatnot. They have the bigger tire balancing machines. So as, instead of driving to Troy, we recommend going with Leslie Tire, and just going up 94.
Does that, does that happen quite often?
Yeah, and those, yeah, and the bigger equipment. Yep.
Questions. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Question on the bid tab. So if you go to the bid tab, which, Leslie Tire Service, it lists a bid for item number two, which is the advanced crossbar L, or, I think, was that L or JTT, L something? Anyway, it lists them bidding as 601.24, unit price total of 1202.48. But if you go to their actual bid they submitted, which is right here, the handwritten one, they didn't put a bid in for the advanced crossbar. They put a line, line. It's on page four of the handwritten proposal. So where did we get those numbers? It looks like, if I had to guess, they were copy and pasted from ATS Fleet Services, because they're the same.
Yeah, they, that company, they must, maybe they don't have those tires available, so they didn't submit a bid. But for sake of comparison of bids, we use the same numbers the...
So that was on purpose?
Yeah.
Why would we put, if they didn't bid on it, why would we put that in? I can't, how can I trust this bid tab when we're making dumb numbers for points of comparison? It just doesn't make any sense.
No, so, so I, I'll take responsibility for that. So when, when the bids came in, it looked like Leslie Tire Service was the cheapest?
Uh-huh.
Because there was an empty line item there, because they don't provide that tire. So because they were the cheapest tire, because there was a zero in there, to make it comparable, to be able to compare all the other tires, we just mimicked what the lowest bid for that tire would have been, to still see that ATS was the cheapest one.
No, the bid tab needs to reflect, the bid tab needs to reflect what they actually bid. How can I trust any bid tab if we start putting in numbers that the bidders did not put into their submissions?
That number was, like I said, that number was put in there to be able to do a comparison, so council can be able to do a comparison. It should have been taken out.
And did any other council member notice that this number was made up? No, it's not even called out in here. It's not even called out in here that this was not part of Leslie Tire Service's bid. This isn't on Leslie. They didn't have the product. I mean, where are we going to get this product from? I guess it would be small enough where you could just buy it.
Correct. So if that number was out, if that number was out of their bid, then they would have been $1,200 cheaper, then, then they would have been...
And we understand that when they don't bid on, when we ask for unit pricing on various products, sometimes they don't have the product, so they don't put a number in. I didn't see the same thing done for the unit pricing. I, I just, we were used to seeing that, and taking that into account. When we start adding numbers that weren't put into the original bid as submitted by the bidder, it calls into question the integrity of the bid tab. When I'm looking at it, I check these things, and it bugs me when number, I thought it was just a copy and paste, or I thought you were going to say, oh, it was a clerical error, the clerk made the mistake. It was like, okay.
It should have been taken back out. It was done to be able to compare apples to apples, to be able to see who the lowest bid was.
So we weren't supposed, I...
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I'll make sure that this does not happen again. This, there's no other bid tab in this whole process that has anything like that.
Because now I'm thinking, literally, I have to, and I, I tend to...
Yeah, I should have put an explanation.
Check every number, and it doesn't seem like that happens until it gets to the table sometimes.
No, I should have put an explanation in the cover sheet, so I do apologize, and it won't happen again.
This was a bid packet, I was, this was not fun to find all these little typos, typos and clerical errors, and to hear that was kind of put in on purpose, I, I don't know, that bugs me. Because I, you know, we only get, unless we do individual research on our own, which sometimes we have to, a lot of times we have to, and ask the follow-up questions. When we come into a meeting, we come in only having the materials given to us by administration to prepare, to take the votes, to spend the taxpayer's money, as is our fiduciary requirements. And I put a lot of, I won't say trust, because I don't know where I'm at with that right now, but we're supposed to be able to put a lot of trust in what we have in front of us, in order to make our, our decisions. And when we're making up numbers and we're submitting bids, I mean, we understand, I mean, we understand if they don't, you know, when we do these things, we get these things every year. I don't know, it just, it bugs me, because now I have to think, oh my God, I really do have to check every single number to make sure one didn't slip in there that could potentially throw everything off, or be something that is important to our decision. So that just, it bugs me when I see things like that. You find one mistake in the PO, and then you start thinking, okay, now I have to treat every PO, because I just can't take it into account, the trust that should be necessary, that administration did that before it got to us for our vote. It's been bugging me, I'm sorry. I'm not sorry. That's our job.
Sorry, not sorry.
That's our job, and that's what we all should be doing. And I, should we have to? That, I guess, is a broader question. Thank you.
And the recommendation was the lowest bidder with the project. That didn't change the pricing.
It's the second lowest bidder is the recommendation.
I'm sorry, right. Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, so on the bid tab, it does have an asterisk at the bottom, and says bold type indicates alternative bid. I mean, maybe that's just, if in fact, you're going to leave that in, so that we see what you did, maybe it's a, a double asterisk or something.
Yeah, or an explanation in the cover sheet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I would move to approve the, the, or to award the 2425 vehicle and equipment tire contract and blanket purchase order to Leslie Tire Service, in the annual amount of $60,000.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Vitale. Additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
601. H requests to approve the motor pool part contract. 7H.
So this is a multi-year bid for automotive parts that our mechanics use. These are common parts that are used between, you know, similar vehicles. Many of them, the vendors stocks in our, in our facility, so that when a car comes in for a brake light, a police car, we have it ready to go. So we did have one bid from a local vendor here in St. Clair Shores, who has, our current vendor, and does a fantastic job for us, for us, George's Automotive, and we'd recommend approving the contract with, with them.
Ms. Rusi?
Okay. So the recommended motion doesn't state any award of contracts, because I'm reading this, and you called in a multi-year contract. We have a bid tab, 24 to 27, it says background brief, receipt proposals for 2427. We actually put this out for 2427. In the recommended motion, unlike the other multi-agenda items we've had, there is no approve the award of the contract and blanket PO. It just says a blanket PO. Okay. Well, I'm looking, and it's like, why is that? And I'm looking at what this one bidder actually bid. If you read the actual contract extension page, then I guess you're recommending we approve a multi-year bid, because that's what you said, even though the motion doesn't indicate one way or the other, so as someone trying to prepare for the meeting, knowing what is being proposed. I don't know. But if you actually look at the contract extension, this is what George put. Section A, 25 to 26 extension, the contract is acceptable. Yes. Net change in unit price is for 25 to 26, plus 3%, minus 1%. So is that 2%? What is that? Section B, 26 to 27, et cetera, contract is acceptable. Yes, great. Net change in unit price is for 26 to 27, negative 4%. Is that true? Do they want, are they proposing in two years, they're going to be reducing their price from whatever it is to 4%, minus 4%? It sounds like they didn't really bid correctly for the contract extension. So how could we approve a multi-year contract, when I don't even know the pricing we're approving, given it's plus 3, minus 1, which I assume is 2%, but I don't think that's what they meant, because they would have put just 2%. And then B is all messed up, or they say, are we going to award a contract with minus 4% decrease in unit pricing, which would not be typical of what a bidder would be bidding at all? So are we being asked for one year, which they actually, I believe, did bid correctly, or a multi-year with the goofy, and that's the adjective I wrote on my notes, ask about the goofy extension pricing, that I think was probably put in by, or by the bidder, because it just doesn't make any sense?
Yeah, I can get clarification.
So what were we being asked to do tonight? You called in a multi-year contract, where we, if we would have been up here and Dave would have read motion to approve, would we have been giving them three years with goofy contracts at such a price, and I don't think they intended, I don't think they want to, and I don't think we even understand the contract we would be entering into with them, because it just doesn't make any sense, because they made mistakes in the contract extension. And again, if they did that, and it was fine, and the recommended motion was recommend one year, okay, great, but the recommended motion doesn't even have a sworn-in contract, multi-year or one year, so I don't even know what it was, but I guess it was multi-year, even though the contract extension page, I guess, didn't raise any questions in anyone's eyes who read the packet before it came on my doorstep at 10:00 AM on Friday. I just don't understand that. But now we have to get clarification. I'm going to, you know what, I would recommend probably moving to table, but I see other pens are up, so I'm not going to do that.
I was going to recommend.
Okay. Move to table, so we can get clarification on that contract extension thing, what we're actually being asked to enter into.
Support. Moved to table by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Rubello. No more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Aye, accord.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you. Jenna, thank you. Ayes, request approval to award the bid for three-year contract with Yo and Yo Auditing Services, with an option for additional two years. Renee?
Hello, Mayor and Council. As you all probably know, our contract with Yo and Yo expired after last year's audit was completed, so we were, we needed to go out to bid to put in place a new contract for this upcoming audit that will take place after the end of this fiscal year. I did prepare a bid and put it out onto BidNet, and we had two bidders. The low bid was Yo and Yo, who we already have, and we've been very happy with their services, and so we are recommended going with the low bidder for the recommended three-year with, with optional two extra years. The pricing is $78,000, starting out for the first year, and then it increases $2,500 a year, up to $88,000 for the fifth year.
Questions. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. I know, in looking at the proposal from Yo and Yo, in terms of their timeline, they have, they begin to meet with staff, and there's preliminary meetings, and start actually doing the heavy lifting work, of actually going through the numbers and the books and all that. The one thing I didn't see in there is any consultation with council. the books and all that. The one thing I didn't see in there is any consultation with council. And I don't think it was a part of their proposal when we first went with them seven years ago. I remember with the prior partner that was in charge of our contract, each year.
Dave?
Yeah, Dave. I would at least get a call and of asking, hey, is there anything of interest you think we should be looking at, considering we're the ones eventually receiving the audit? And I know this, you know, and I recall talking to the new partner that took over ALI in the last couple of years. I even think there was one communication where, well, one council member was going to be picked, and that's who they would talk to. I don't even know who that council member was, or if that even happened. So to basically make sure that we do have oversight over what's being looked at, or if we do have concerns of where the auditor is looking. I think as a part of this, they're required to reach out to council, provide contact info at the right time, and when they want to have input prior to the heavy lifting work.
Okay. I can recommend that.
Well, I think that ought to just be required of them. Because otherwise, it's like, we're just receiving a report at the end without being able to offer. It's like, hey, I know we're doing all these, you know, hey, we're doing all these other events and all these other sponsorships coming in, all this other stuff. And so you've got to make sure all that's being done right, and that's all new, to kind of give them that heads up. That was the type of conversation I had with David. And I think he was always driving from one place to another. It was like, he was driving somewhere, and he'd just give me a call and, you know, and just let him know. It's like, hey, these are the things, areas I'm a little concerned with.
Okay.
Knew where to look. So.
Yep, I can.
I think that would be required of them going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And there was one thing in page 16. There's a list of reports they're required to give. They did not include the DDA as a report. The DDA was listed as entities that need to be audited elsewhere in the proposal, but it was not listed as one of the reports that need to be provided.
Okay.
So I think the DDA would get a separate audit report.
They have in the past.
Yes.
They always have, yeah.
Okay. So I think that just needs to get updated.
Okay.
Which I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem with.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Having served on several subcommittees over the years for professional services and hiring, you know, various companies to provide professional services, you know, I'm always interested in looking at like the timeline. I appreciate the timeline you set up in the request for proposals, submission of the bid specs and firms notify, then presentations, engagement letter. Not having been seated in the oral presentations from the companies, what beside the price point and the personal experience made Yo and Yo stand out, I guess?
Well, those were the main things. We did not, because we only had two bidders, they were the low bid, we didn't actually end up having oral presentations with, with both companies, even though we had set out that that's what we would do if we had more bidders. But in talking with Dustin, we had decided that we would go with the low bidder. We are happy with their services. They're qualified. They've done a good job in the past. And that was.
See, I always thought that was a really educating part of the process, is they actually taught them about their proposal and asked questions, see what ideas they're bringing. I understand we have prior experience with them.
Right.
But we also did with some of the other companies that we ended up hiring for other professional services.
Okay.
And it gives the new companies the chance to come in and make the case about what different services and things they may offer us.
Yeah, I can see, I can see the benefit of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion being ordered?
Moved to approve.
Do you want to add that part of the motion, Mr. Karen, you know, that you want to make sure?
That they're required to reach out to council for comment prior to the beginning of the audit process.
Yeah, DDA should be included.
Yeah, and DDA be included in the reports.
That's moved by Mr. Karen, supported by.
Support.
Mr. Freder. Additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Six to one, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, request approval of the ward of the alley paving project.
Good evening. City Engineer Mike Freckleton.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good. Thank you.
So alley paving, you know, been kind of a hot topic for a little bit here. Definitely something that needs to get done within the city. Back in August, we, you know, tried to put out, or we did put out bids for alley number three, which is between Sunnydale and Ardmore, and we received no bids. And so this time around, we put it out, put it out to bid in, you could either bid it for asphalt or concrete. And this time, we received 10 bids to an asphalt, eight for concrete. So we are recommending that Luigi Fernandini and Son, who was the low bidder, be awarded the contract for the alley paving in the amount of $137,859.50. And that is to do both alley number three and alley number four, which is from Ardmore to Centennial. So this would be a great start to our, you know, city's alley program, and, you know, hopefully give us some momentum moving forward. So from there, I'll open it up to questions.
We have $200,000 allocated?
Yes. We have $100,000 in this fiscal year, and then the budget that was submitted to council as proposed has another $100,000. So over the next two months, we would have $200,000 allocated towards alleys.
So you would be coming back to us to?
So the motion is to.
I get that. It's only 137.
And then to utilize the unit pricing to complete the additional work.
Oh, yeah, not to exceed.
Not to exceed the 200,000.
Yep.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We would ask that council consider adopting or approving their unit pricing, so that once the two alleys are complete, we could continue the alley program utilizing the full amount of what we hope will be budgeted for alley repair.
And you'd bring that back to us, which alleys, which alley may, may be done?
We would work off of the priority list that was adopted in 2022, and we would bring back what we can afford.
Okay.
To council.
Mr. Vitale.
Actually, that's along the lines of what, what I was going to ask, is that if we've got 137 as a bid, and we've got 200,000 budgeted, that's $62,000. That $62,000 that can go towards getting us to our $500,000 goal?
No.
Or is it encumbered in a fund?
Could, could. Oh, yeah. Okay, it could.
I mean, the reason I ask that is, is I don't know what kind of project we're going to take on. It would only be maybe one other alley for 62,000?
Most likely. And we'd have to go down that established priority list and see what, you know, we have, all the plans are mostly drafted already from when AEW did this work back in August. So we would have to go through, look at quantities and see, you know, which of the next corresponding priority alleys would fit best in that 62,000.
Versus the other idea of taking that 62,000 and using it to try to plug up some budget holes.
Yes.
So I guess, do we need to alter the motion for that? I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I do see this as maybe we just do the two alleys and we're done.
Could be. Then you'd only motion for 137,000 for the two alleys.
Well, I don't necessarily want to put handcuffs on them, because maybe this isn't the best place to take 62,000 from. I don't know. It's kind of tough to decide up here right now.
Yeah, but if you give them 137,000, they can always come back.
And those two, and if the 200 is already allocated.
They come back in front of us anyways. If, okay, so then, I suppose I'll make a motion to award the bid of 137, 859, 50 plus 10% contingency to Fernandini, Luigi Fernandini? Luigi Fernandini and Sons Men Company.
Support that. Okay. It's moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Karen. Mr. Frederick.
So my question is, the, the difference between Fernandini and Galouy is, what is it, $18?
Yep, $18.
So have we used Fernandini before?
To my knowledge, we have not. He does a lot of work in Mount Clemens with their sidewalk program. AEW has worked with them a lot. And Anthony has plenty of work to do with roads around here.
Talking about Galouy?
Yes. Yes. He, I have plenty of work for him to do with streets. So he will, he will be busy.
I'm less concerned about how much work we're giving him versus how good the work is. So are we, are we convinced? I mean, because, and it's both cement, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's important, I think, too, with good base and all that, because the asphalt in the alleys just does not seem to work.
No, I agree. That's why we wanted to do the alternate bids for concrete. But no, I mean, Fernandini, they do the, you know, this kind of, these kind of projects. They're, you know, parking lots, sidewalk gaps, alleys, kind of thing. So I have, yeah, I, I trust their quality for, for this type of work.
So my other question would be is, you know, Fernandini was the low bidder for alley number three, but then Galouy was the low bidder for alley number four. We can split the bid if we want to, and that actually saves us a little, a couple extra bucks, too. Not much. But if we're going strictly by low bid, that could be something to consider. I don't know what he, I'm just looking to find out what other people think about that. Or is it, or do we have to give him enough so he comes here?
Yeah, that was the intention of packaging the two alleys together, is to make the contract a little bit more attractive, because then otherwise you'd have, you know, we would have had 100,000 to allocate that, you know, let's say someone bids and they bid 65,000, and they're like, and especially since we want them to start, you know, prior to July 1st for the, to use the fiscal year money, you know, that might not be an attractive bid for somebody. So we wanted to package them together. And then that saves us, you know, mobilization costs for someone, you know, doing one alley leaving versus someone coming in and doing the other alley. So.
Got it.
Yeah, just adds to scale, adds to the attractiveness of the contract, exactly.
Mr. Rubello?
Yeah, I'm sort of thinking along the same lines as, as Chris was, as far as, you know, where you can move the money, how many alleys do we have to do and so forth. So I think that's something to, to keep track of. But those two alleys, to clarify for anyone listening, because I've heard some stuff on Facebook before and all that, those are owned. Those alleys are the city of St. Clair Shores. And they have to be some of the worst alleys I've seen. I've, I won't say I drive the alleys, but I've, that's a pretty, those are pretty bad ones. And I think that's a great selection. And, you know, I guess we got to worry about where we move the water and all that type of stuff.
Yes.
Right? Because I know there's pooling and stuff back there a lot. So.
Yeah, and that's part of the project, is regrading everything, you know, promoting positive drainage. So, yeah, absolutely.
Because I know we've been back there, and we just sort of, you know, patch it up every, every couple of years. But it's totally destroyed.
Okay. Ms. Burgess.
One quick question. Sorry, one quick question. So if the alley does not have any drainage right now, you'll be adding drainage to it?
Well, we won't be, we wouldn't be adding like drainage structures, but we would be, you know, crowning, pitching the pavement to promote drainage to either, you know, maybe drainage structures that are in the private parking lots or off, you know, into adjacent greenbelt areas. So it doesn't sit on the pavement.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Karen.
And I think the fact that we got another contract vendor that's actually competitive with Galouy, it'd be beneficial to have someone else on the list that potentially to work with in the future.
Agreed.
You know, that we're relying on a contract extension with Galouy for multiple years for street work. So having another cement vendor local that we could trust to do the work, so it'd be a good way to try them out.
Sure. Agreed.
Mr. Vitale.
Just since it got brought up about pitching the water and everything like that, please, please make sure you do not pitch it into somebody's private backyard.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
We don't need that.
Absolutely not.
Pitch towards, pitch towards the sewer.
Mr. Karen?
Sorry. So one of the properties, because I grew up that neighborhood, between Ardmore to Centennial, their whole side yard is open to that alley.
Okay.
So that is technically to their backyard. Beyond that, there's at least a screen wall, greenbelt area. So you'd need to make sure, work with them, that that part of their property is may need regrading to make sure that it just kind of flows back down to the main street versus all on their property.
Yeah, absolutely.
Moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Karen to award to Luigi Fernandez, 137,859.50. Of course, with 10% contingency. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Item eight is consent agenda.
I'd like to pull eight, G10.
I'd like to pull. Hold on, G, just, G8, okay.
Eight, G13.
13. All right. Then we'll need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the rest.
Support. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight G is request to approve the compound water meter testing repairs replacement purchase order.
No, I saw eight G10.
Oh, you said 10, sorry.
X.
X.
Yes, ma'am. Request to approve Michigan Eagle Community Public Works Supply Annual Invoice.
Yep. Thank you. I was wondering, we're being asked to approve a blanket purchase order to pay a single invoice that we anticipate receiving probably not till the end of October. The other one was received last year, October 30, 2023. I'm wondering why we're being asked to approve a blanket purchase order for not something like products that we'll purchase at various times during the fiscal year and need to have on hand, but for a single invoice that we haven't even received yet. Given it's June, it's probably not going to be issued until October 2004. Why don't we just, 2024, why don't we just get this on the agenda in November, whenever it's received, for us to approve the actual invoice and the actual amount, not doing a blanket P O for a single invoice that's still several months away from us receiving it.
You want eight, 13. Mr. Lint?
It's fine.
Last one was a little less than the 25,000. So you want to make that motion, that Ms. Rusi, that it comes back to us?
Yeah, it will come back to us with the actual invoice. I, I just think that's a little bit cleaner than doing a blanket P O, given this isn't products we'll be purchasing throughout the year. It's a single invoice.
All righty. Can that just be a motion to table?
No, because we don't have the actual invoice yet. This is approving up to, how it's written, is approving up to 25. And when we get the actual invoice, we'll have the actual amount in front of us. So I don't think it would be a table per se, because what's in front of us right now isn't the actual invoice. It's a hypothetical amount up to a certain amount.
And so you're asking for that in November?
Yeah. Yeah, just put that on the agenda when we have the actual invoice.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just removing it?
Yeah.
So you made that motion?
What, I, what motion?
Would you like to make that motion?
To bring this back in.
Yep.
On, let's say at the, you know, when, at the first council meeting after receipt.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Support. Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick. Abby, you understand the motion? Okay. Any other questions regarding it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. 13. And then 13, request to approve joint ceiling blanket purchase order. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, and this one, when we approved the contract last year, it was for a recommended amount of $100,000. This year, it's $150,000, which joint ceiling, you know, saves roads, extends a life. If it's in the street budget, I'm fine with that. I think the problem I've got when we went out for bid with it last year, we had decreasing amounts of, in the bid. For example, 2023 was like 92,500 linear feet. Then it was 83,100 linear feet. And then for this next year, 75,400 feet. And that bid would have only, for that 75,000, it would have been $65,000, not 150,000. So if we're going out to do that much additional work, going from 65,000 up to 150,000, I wonder if that should just go out for a rebid to potentially get a better unit price.
Mr. Lint?
You can go out to bid.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to require the joint ceiling for next year to go out for bid.
Moved by Mr. Karen.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Rusi, to take the joint ceiling out to bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Rubello?
I just wanted, I wanted to bring something up. This was in the consent agenda also. Eight G V I I. Is that eight?
Eight.
I'm sorry. Which one was it?
Eight G V eight.
You must be reading his mind that he had the question about eight G eight.
Compound water meter testing repairs replacement purchase order?
Yeah. I wanted to get some clarification on this. What's the plan?
I guess Brian would be the best, if you don't mind coming up. Sorry.
This is for a firm that we use to service, test the larger water meters that we have in commercial buildings. The compound meters, the big, these big meters that sometimes need. that sometimes need service and you, you, instead of replacing them because they're, you know, they could be upwards of ten thousand dollars. So this company helps us repair ones that are not working. And this was a contract that we put out to bid previously. Um, so this is, I think, maybe the second year of the contract?
This is the second year of the contract. All right. So how many years we got, you said?
One more.
Okay. So that's what we have to, okay. I'm just not the biggest fan of these water meter things than residential's, but that's a different pony for a different race. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item nine is updates and files from prior council meetings. Mr. Lint?
Um, Mr. Vitale asked for a follow-up on the ticket that was issued for the signs. I know, um, Mr. Erie's office is working on that. Uh, Mr. Karen asked for an amendment to the sign ordinance regarding rotating barber sign shop pulls. Uh, he requested to bring this back to the June seventeenth city council meeting. Clerk has added this to the June seventeenth council meeting. Mr. Karen mentioned the plant at the end of Blossom Heath Pier, the taller bushes are not looking very healthy and asked for them to be reviewed for replacement while they're still under warding. The special project manager has reached out to both Cornell and E C T about replacing the plant materials, and the meeting, uh, has occurred, happened on Friday, and I'll be getting a report from Chris on what that meeting entailed. Um, Mr. Vitale asked, I'm sorry, Mr. Vitale said that the hazardous waste event was poorly run. The information on the website was unclear. He suggested they add latex paint to the list of disposable items. Um, as, I was gonna mention this during my report. Um, however, as every council is aware up here, G F L has been purchased by Priority Waste.
Residential.
The residential port, yeah, the residential portion has been purchased. Um, so we are working with, we started working with Priority Waste. Um, it has been suggested to try to have them come to our next council meeting. Uh, so we were trying to see if we can get something set up for that. If not, though, this has been passed on to Priority once we get our new contact.
I hope it wasn't my latex paint issue.
It might have.
Made him sell it. Forget it, sell it.
You did remind them, they live on the next street, and we know where he lives. They literally, he literally lives on the next street. He can walk here.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Nope. That's it.
Move that comments by individual council. Mr. Frederick?
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna start with, uh, with library announcements instead of finishing this time. So, uh, you know, join us for the Lure of the West program on June twentieth at two P M. Presented by the Smithsonian American Art Museum in Washington, D C. Get to explore the Old West through the artistic work depicting it. This program will be available in person and on Zoom. Registration begins June sixth and can be done online over the phone or in person at the library. Uh, come see the new history walk, uh, called Being Young in St. Clair Shores from June eighteenth to August seventh. Photos of young people in St. Clair Shores from nineteen oh three to nineteen seventy-eight. I know there's a few of us up here that could possibly be in those pictures. Uh, will be on display in a history walk outside the building on the Jefferson Avenue side of the library. Uh, should be interesting to see what, what gets picked. Uh, listen, listen to author R S. Doreen discuss their twenty twenty-four Michigan notable book Enough to Lose on June thirteenth at six P M. With a book signing following the discussion. All ages are welcome. At this program, registration is required and copies of the book for the book signing are available for pre-order on the Alcott's Attic website. Uh, trivia night is back June twenty-fourth with everyone eighteen plus. Welcome to register in teams of four. And those who do not have full groups or who register alone will be matched to form four-person groups. Registration begins June seventeenth by phone or in person. Uh, the summer reading program for adults and kids, uh, will be from June eighteenth to August second. Children can register for your summer reading log and get your first raffle ticket at the summer reading kickoff program, uh, Tuesday, June eighteenth from six to eight P M. Uh, due to the generosity of the Parks and Recreation Department, a special kickoff-only raffle prize will be up for grabs to St. Clair Shores residents. For additional details on how to participate or details on any of our other events, please see the library newsletter, the online calendar, or the Facebook page. Now, get your pencils out here. Some dates, we mentioned them before. Tuesday, September tenth, Tuesday, September tenth, five thirty to nine thirty, that is the Wigs for Kids Annual Gala. And, Mr. Mayor, I assume that we are still taking bricks for the second phase, so to speak, of the first tee out at the golf course. Um, I wanted to mention that we handed out, um, the Don Frederick Memorial Scholarship Awards over the last three weeks. I just want to mention, uh, Brody Carr, Zach Kardness, Jaden Pazu, Ava Kelly, Jayla Edwards, and Micah Gore were all recipients. So I want to congratulate them, uh, on being the recipients of the twenty twenty-four Don Frederick Memorial Scholarship Award. And then, um, the Optimist Club Golf Outing is coming up pretty fast, Friday, July twelfth. Um, I'm still waiting to see if we see any of you guys coming up here to don the golf, uh, attire and get out there and raise some money for these kids. Again, all this money gets spent right back here in St. Clair Shores. Um, there is a five thousand dollar hole-in-one prize. Uh, it's an eighteen-hole scramble. It's, uh, one twenty-five a person, uh, eight A M. Registration, nine o'clock shotgun, and it is at our illustrious St. Clair Shores Golf Club. Uh, and the last thing I want to ask, and I, I brought some of that up with, with Brian regarding the signage at Frederick Park, uh, we're actually on Pallister Road, uh, to make sure that we're, people are not parking there because people have been parking there occasionally. And I know that our, our little parking lot at, uh, Frederick Park, it's overused by the Mercedes dealership, and I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that. But I also wanted to ask, since we're trimming those, I also wanted to ask, we're, we're still waiting for that sign, uh, on Red Maple Lane across the street from the, uh, Tropical Smoothie Place. There is one sign that's very close to the corner, and we were gonna put a second sign up, uh, next to the, uh, the driveway that goes into the dentist's office there so that, uh, people will stop parking, parking there. If they park on both sides, again, there's no chance for a fire truck to get down that street. Um, and I think that's it. If anything else, I'll call you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah. Um, well, to our, our C and G reporter who's still in the audience tonight, I hope at least one line somewhere in your stories is gonna start out with a spirited debate was held.
That's how Abby's gonna have the minutes for each.
A spirited debate was held. Well, you know what? Thanks for staying. This is, every year we do this meeting. This is not one of the more ex, sort of exciting, I suppose, but the more dry ones. Anyways, um, I see that there's work going on on the former Hearst Appliance, which is good to see. Some, finally, some forward progress on that. Uh, of course, that brings to mind the other fire damaged building. Is there any plan on that one that's kind of the missing one that they, at least they painted the walls, they're not scorched anymore, but they have anything in front of us to rebuild?
They do. Uh, they have, uh, plans to replace the building. Um, and it is currently in review.
Okay. Well, that's good to, good to hear that, then. Um, you know what? I think I'm gonna keep it, uh, pretty short then tonight. I'm just moving along.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
Yes, thank you. Um, a couple, I just wanted to go over just some things that have been happening. Um, I did attend the Veterans Gallery opening with the Project Brotherhood Resolve this weekend, and, uh, we were there every single night, and it was fabulous. Um, better attended than it was last year, but still need to get the word out for next year. Um, it, it had such a great, um, organization, helping veterans, homelessness, suicide, um, taking care of their bills, and, um, I was just really, really, um, happy with what went on there this weekend. And, um, we had a great band on Sunday with the Orbison's playing. It was, it was marvelous. Um, this Saturday is the Blessing of the Fleet. J Y C is hosting at Watermark. Um, the ceremony starts at ten o'clock, but they said they're gonna be opening up early so that you can get your tiki bar on. And Shoreline Sound Chorus will be there. Uh, then, uh, Music in the Park, our first one coming up on Wednesday. I'm very excited about that. We have the Blue Water Kings kicking it off this week from seven P M. to eight thirty, and, um, we have a few extra, uh, sponsors this year besides Pediprint. We have Genesis Chevrolet, Amazon, or Amazing Transportation, and B A S Security Systems. Um, and our fireworks is coming up this month, too. So excited about that. Uh, Firework Extrac, Extrac, I can't even say the word.
Extracanza.
There you go. Um, and the, um, wristbands are gonna be able, uh, be available at the Civic Center. Residents has three dollars, um, as long as you're getting it ahead of time, and five dollars for non-residents. And then parking passes are available for ten dollars. And then, um, June thirteenth, coming up next Thursday, is our farmer's market. I'm excited about that, too, because now that the Kiwanis Jack of Spades was pulled, we are no longer doing that, and I can attend our Thursday farmer's markets. So there'll be food trucks, beer, uh, area, and live entertainment. And then, of course, we have our social district, but, uh, David is going to talk about that. So that's all I have.
You're right in there, too, with us. Don't worry, you can do that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rabello?
I might as well start with the social district, which is coming up next, uh, this Saturday coming up here, and always a lot of good time, fun. Uh, we had a very special one that took place, uh, uh, last Saturday, uh, pre-parade, uh, put on by the parade committee. Uh, incredible bunch of people, uh, to work with. We had a first-time-ever drone show here in St. Clair Shores, which it looked like everybody had one heck of a time, and there was one heck of a crowd there. So. Oh, the picture. Forget it. Thanks, Matt. Okay, if you can see one of them right there. And I gotta tell you, one of the, the ones I saw when they flashed USA, and I think the mayor, you were there, too, and, I mean, people were chanting USA, USA. So, um, people loved it. Uh, I have to thank really everybody in this room, everybody sitting up here, because we all participated in some way or another. Okay, let's go to the parade. Um, can't really see it that well from here, but on the far right, we had a great memorial for, um, Mark Wells. We honored him. Thank you, Parks and Rec Department. They pulled down a jersey from the, the rafters there. They put it on the Zamboni and, um, drove it down the street. Uh, Lake Shore High School had a picture of, uh, Mark a little bit. Mark Wells was from St. Clair Shores, member of the Merrill Klein Ice Team in nineteen eighty that, uh, he beat the Soviet Union, and then went on to win a gold medal. So he passed away a couple of weeks ago, and we gave a little memory, um, for him in our parade. And very special guest came through here. Um, I, I can't say enough, the city of St. Clair Shores has always been incredible, uh, support for our Memorial Day Parade. And there you can see, based on all the past parades we've had and the great history here in St. Clair Shores, we were able to get Miss America, and that is one heck of an accomplishment for our parade committee. Um, and even Bob Erie there, you got a chance to take a selfie with her. I saw that. So. And some of the other things we had in our parade, there's the Arsenal of Democracy Far Left. We have some of our military folks on the right. We have a little bit of everything in our parade. And, uh, we even had, uh, Toby Keith, Mike Skugs here, Mike Skug here from St. Clair Shores, longtime St. Clair Shores guy loves the town, and a couple of other cool things that, uh, went on. There was Miss America down at the W D I V Studios. I want to have a special thanks to Nick Monticelli from W D I V. He had her come down, interviewed her on television, and, uh, it wa, it was an incredible experience to get, pass the message of St. Clair Shores, um, all across metropolitan Detroit and beyond. Um, I was talking to him a little bit earlier before that, that interview, and he's saying he knows all about St. Clair Shores, and, uh, our towns catch now. We do a great job. Okay, we, yeah, okay, we had a spirited debate a little bit ago, but that's all part of it. And, uh, and there's Miss America, uh, in our parade. I took a special one for the fire chief, but he's not here. I tried to get it right in front of the central fire station as it's, as it looks right now, because it's not gonna look like that next year. Anyway, so I want to thank Carol Kane from, uh, Michigan Matters. She works for the Free Press. She heard all about our parade. She's seen our parade last year. She did an article, um, in the Free Press, and I'm gonna tell you something. We went nationwide. CBS Out, CBS Outdoors, uh, her article went, it was about, uh, our parade, and it was picked up across the entire country. So as ZZ Top would say, we're bad. We're nationwide. Okay? So some great things going on, and there was a tribute there to our friend, our St. Clair Shores guy, Mark Wells in the center, and that's his brother, um, with the USA jersey there. And we took that at a Red Wing Games that we went to. So we'll miss, we'll miss Mark, not, not knowing that our, our native son's still around, but may he rest in peace. He was in a lot of pain. His family, um, saw what we were doing. There was a couple of them at our parade. Uh, there's John, his brother, who's, is next to Mark, and, uh, he wanted to say thank you to all of us here at the city for looking out for Mark and taking care of Mark and, you know, putting his name on the arena and so forth. So, um, that was their thank you to us. So, um, other than that, you guys, I'm gonna, I just, I can ask some questions later on to, to Denise Pike, but we'll move on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Um, just a quick thank you to the parade committee, uh, for a fantastic parade yet again. Every year it just gets bigger and, and I don't want to say better, but it just, it seems like it's much more of an undertaking, and you know what? They rise to the challenge every year and just keep, keep, keep working really hard to make this a showcase event. So thank you to all the volunteers, not only the committee members, but also all the volunteers who came out and helped out on parade day and the, the time prior. So I, it takes a lot of people to, um, logistically even just get everyone in the right place and down the street in the, the right order, and, um, everyone ended up getting down the street, and people had a great time. And thank you to the spectators who came out because, like I always say, you can't have a parade without spectators. And walking the parade route, my favorite part is just you look and you see all the smiling kids, and they're all excited, and they're all cheering you on. And it, being in, you know, watching the parade's fun, but being in it, you get to see everybody, and you get to see how much they're enjoying it, and it makes you feel proud to be a part of the city because it's a, it's a wonderful event, and it's bringing a lot of happiness and emotions to people. So I really appreciate, uh, all their hard work, and I know everyone who was at the parade did as well. Uh, just one quick issue item, no announcements today, but one quick, um, I guess, request. Uh, we get this, uh, email every Friday from the clerk's office with the agendas and minutes. Um, and we get to our state email. It's always like, when my, this is not hyperbole. It's one of my favorite parts of Friday to get these, because I'll go through and read all the minutes. I'll go through and look at the agendas. Not all the minutes, but the ones that tend to be more interesting. At least it's kind of fun to keep updated that way. So I always look forward to receiving it. Thank you for sending, your office for sending it out. There was one, though, this time that I opened it, I was like, oh, there's a D D A special meeting coming up. And it was a very brief agenda with two items on it. And I was thinking, oh, rules for social district. That might be interesting to go to, given it's not even the D D A that puts on the social district. That exists prior to the D D A. It's nine back, so I don't know what they're talking about saying rules for. But we got the, like, what happens sometimes is we get agendas, not only for means that are coming up, but for means already happened. And we got the email on Friday, May thirty-first, and it turns out the meeting was for May twenty-ninth, and it was a special meeting. So it was only even noticed on the website. It was posted. I looked afterwards on May twenty-eighth at eleven o'clock. I'm not like obsessively effiving the committees and agenda section of our city website to see what might pop up. And it's like, I kind of wish we had prior notice, you know, maybe if we could get an email, if a committee calls a special meeting, an email with the agenda just at the same time it's posted. So we're aware, because it was like, oh, I would have liked to have attended that one. I'm sure that was a spirited discussion, given I'm not sure what actually is being discussed, given I don't know what the, where the D D A has to make rules for a social district, given they're not the ones putting it on. But, um, just going forward, if maybe a committee has a special meeting, not one of the regular scheduled means that we all have noticed of because they have a regular point at a regular time, a regular place, maybe we could get, uh, at a regular time, at a regular place, maybe we could get an email when it's posted to the city website. I know there's a way to stop notifications, but that also, I think, is kind of buggy sometimes. So this way we are aware of what's going on in case we do want to make it a point. We know when the regularly scheduled planning commission means are and ZBA means are and so on and so forth. But if a special meeting is called, maybe if we could get just the agenda sent out to us prior to it, maybe when it's posted on the website where it has to be, you know, at the time and posted at City Hall, I think that would be helpful going forward. And I guess, you know, who'd be like, oh, I wish I would have been there. I had off of work that day, I would have liked to have been part of the discussion or, you know, witnessed the discussion, but I guess I'll have to wait till the minutes to know it was actually discussed, given it was a very odd seeming agenda item for the DDA to have rules for the social district. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Actually, I'll pick up on where Councilwoman Rusi left off there in terms of the, that agenda item. The rules for a social, the little concerning there is, I think the only rules, official rules that exist were the ordinance that we passed that created it, right? So I, I think in terms of quote rules, probably do need to come back to this body if additional legal rules are required per the ordinance and that. I think if there's issues to discuss regarding it, I guess in my own mind, I'd be a little cautious of bringing those to the DDA, because one of, to Councilwoman Rusi's point, they're not in charge of it. But within the DDA, obviously there's a couple of members of the DDA that greatly benefit from it and other ones that don't and maybe others that are very, could be kind of peeved about it. You could have a variety. So in terms of where we want the DDA going forward, you know, I, I think we want them looking at the development of the whole area and maybe some of those event issues and that. Probably needs to come back to the council to deal with. So that's just maybe my personal preference in terms of how the DDA deals with the issues going forward. Couple of, actually several items. First, in terms of audits and budgets, I know one of the things we always list in the budget or in the audit is we do five-year budgeting. We used to have that, it was a separate tab in the budget and it was never something approved, but it was a financial model that was a guide of like, hey, here's your major revenue, here's your major expenses. And what happens if revenue only went up 2% a year and expenses went up 3% a year? And you can kind of see where the lines begin to cross. Don't know if we actually have that still or whether we need to kind of bring that back, but I do believe that is something we include in the audit, that we say we do. That we need to have some type of financial model going forward. A couple of issues at Briar's Park. There, we had some new tree planting that occurred. A couple of the trees were pretty close to the disc golf pads that were along the sound wall. I think those are gonna get relocated. For sure, one has not been relocated, but I think the other tree they were talking about was near one of the other pads as well. So that needs to get looked at. And then also in terms of disc golf, we still have three concrete pads that were poured, I wanna say, three summers ago, that the markers still have not been put up for in that. So we got like three blank pads without the disc golf markers on, so we need to get that done, you know, that's been out there for a while. Veterans Memorial, Denise, are we on track to have the fencing back down again tomorrow? Around the front turnaround? So that is on track for tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be fully open for concerts on Wednesday?
The contractor is actually paving the turnaround tomorrow, but using a concrete mix that has an expedited cure time, so it's only a cure time of one day. So it will be completely open for the concert on Wednesday.
Okay. So all the, will the fencing just be limited to the?
Around the?
The storm area?
Yeah, along the, the pump structure.
Yeah.
Because we don't, the hatch is being fabricated.
Okay.
And the wall is actually constructed. So the, the wall adjacent to the guard shack.
Okay.
So, yes.
And have they been watering my flowers?
Yes.
Thank you. Then jumping over to Kite Monroe, near the skate park, basically where we have Tony Tizio sign there. Waterfront Environmental Committee, a little, a group of them, they had planted several native plants last year and they had them tagged. At some point, all the tags got taken out, we don't know why. And then this year we came in and added three to four inches of mulch on top of it. So basically, I don't think any of their plants survived. I talked a bit with Rob Adams, who's kind of the crew leader at Kite Monroe. So I'd like to just get directly with him of what do we want to do with that bed? Because right now there's only like three or four plants and it looks kind of bare and, I don't know, we can probably grab some of the grasses from the police station. I still got three left over there that haven't pilfered yet and we can relocate it over there maybe to kind of fill that in. But I'd like to just work directly with Rob on that, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Should we talk, oh, and then another one for Denise. Little Mac Harper Electrical, apparently where we hadn't paid our electric bill in seven years and they took the meter. And so not only the clock doesn't work, our irrigation doesn't work there either. So any timeline on when that's gonna get restored?
That is actually being coordinated by Jeff Brown and I will find out tomorrow.
All right, thank you. And last thing, for Historical Commission, we are targeting during the Farmer's Market on June 13th to dedicate the new historical marker out at the pier. That's the, going through the history of Lake St. Clair. We're just gonna, I just gotta finalize it, the Historical Commission meeting tomorrow, but we're tentatively set to do that, June 13th, out on the pier at 6:00 PM for that dedication. But I'll have the final details tomorrow and email that out to council after the Historical Commission meets. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. City manager's report. No report. Item 12, audience participation, you get five minutes. Timeline views, opinions expressed under audience participation of those of the individual citizen only do not necessarily represent the views, opinions, the mayor, city council, administration, city St. Clair Shores. Anyone? Yes, Mr. Hall. Good evening.
How you doing?
You can sign in after Chuck.
Okay, thank you. Chuck Hall, St. Clair Shores. Dub tail off what Candace said about the parade. I served on the parade committee for 10 years and it was my pleasure, believe me. And it really makes me proud to see the job that this new committee is doing. They, I mean, I just, that, the expectation level was here. They, they took it up, you know, right? And it's great. So on with the, on with the good news here. Reason I came tonight again, I want to address the action once more about what the council did on March 18th. Whereas five of you voted yes to amend an existing street millage language to include alleys and parking lots and to place this ballot prop onto the August primary. Mr. Karen and Ms. Rusi, in their good judgment, voted no on this and I personally thank them for standing up for the people who elected them. The voting residents should carefully consider what this means, to change this amending. If this proposal passes, it will surely broaden the burden on the taxpayer. Like I said before, this includes me now. I'm the retired taxpayer, right? So anyways, however, it will still be called a street millage. And that's kind of the crux of the matter for me. You know, it's a street millage. So I, I would think that, and it's been reiterated before, you know, it should fix streets. So in the future, when it comes to a vote, it'll still be called a street millage if this body has to come back and ask again to increase that, that tax. Okay, so may I submit to you listeners at home, when you allow your local government elected officials to toss in capital expenditures like parking lots and alleys, not to mention, and it wasn't mentioned, the underground excavation that can take place of the drainage systems that comes with these type of construction projects, I will only say again, five members who voted yes on this, your actions resulted in the fact that you're not, no longer asking residents to simply pay for street paving or repairs. You're asking for a whole lot more and assuming that these residents have deep pockets. I'm here to tell the residents, plain and simple, this upcoming millage vote on August 6th isn't about fixing the crumbling street in front of your house. In fact, one could argue adding additional items into this mix could result in less money being appropriated to residential street repair. We've yet to see it, but there's been a lot of other things discussed at that meeting that were brought forth. I heard it reiterated tonight. We have some big millages coming up. And we also have, I, I think I heard on the way here, something about the budget and I didn't, I didn't quite catch it. I was driving, so I couldn't stay on the phone. But we're, you know, we're facing these things. This is what's hitting us and thank God, we got a great council here that, you know, you guys do good work. But I have to take exception to that move and that's why I'm here again. So with that said, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Hall. If you'd just sign in, that would be great. Anyone else?
Anyone?
Yes, yes ma'am. Just the name and the city reside and then after you speak, you can sign in, too. Take your time.
I can know who moves up fast.
Good evening, council members. I just want to say thank you for the job that the city does do. St. Clair Shores is a very fine place to live and Linda will attest to that. We had good results at the Veterans Event this weekend. It was very condensed, but a lot more people showed up, but it's still not there yet. And also the parade on behalf of Lake Shore Pellet Club, I want to thank you guys, especially Dave, because I know what you do with the parade committee. And a good time was had by all. I got stuck in the Jeep parade somehow, probably because I have a Jeep. I was pulling a trailer and Robert Sowell was, I don't know, I think he's driving a Mazda or something. And we're pulling out onto Little Mac. I was second line behind all these Jeeps. They're all giving out ducks and things. I never heard of that. I guess it's a Jeep thing, you put little rubber ducks in your window? So anyway, I'm pulling out with my trailer and our artists in the back and someone says, oh, they thought we were with the Jeep, the Jeep crew. I just had a Jeep and I had a trailer and that's where they put me and we were in position 166. So I'm thinking, okay, fine, this is right. They gave us hot dogs and things, you know? So to make a long story short, we ended up pulling out in front of all the Jeeps. There must have been seven rows of Jeeps and I haven't seen that before, so that's good that they participated, too. But anyway, thank you for everything that you're doing with the city and I'm taking notes. Thank you. Oh, I'm Denise Mativier. I live on 29339 Taylor Street, just off a 12 mile. Speaking of 12 mile drainage, I'm, I'm becoming concerned, so I'm just gonna have to follow you guys. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bring you back to Mayor's comments, just a couple of, I just, I too want to highlight what a great parade. On behalf of the, the city, I want to thank the parade committee, just a fine job, they did a great job. And of course, as we always know, they, they need extra help on parade day and some of the volunteers have been there for, I think, decades, working on that parade. So appreciate all of their help. And again, it, it starts, starts summer and it's just 71 years we've had this parade and for 71 years, it's just been a fantastic parade. And I thank the committee to keeping that standard high and working so hard year round to, to make St. Clair Shores, you know, the best place for a Memorial Day Parade. So thank you so much for all their effort. And the social district, what, what, what a home run. I want to thank the parade committee because they sponsored the drone show, first drone show I ever saw. I think a number of people, the first drone show they ever, they, they ever witnessed. Again, it was, it was packed, not only in that social district, but down Nine Mile Road. Fantastic, just, just a great event down in St. Clair Shores. And it's just really that social district is making, you know, that Nine Mile Mac District. It's just really improving it. I, I heard that Cheesecake Shop sold out of everything they had in there or pretty much close to it. So just what a success. We, we know the buyers do very well, but the fact that other, other businesses there are, are doing well, too, is just a testament that how, how strong that social district is in that whole area. So that's positive. A lot of stuff about the pool, but I want to say thank you to the pool, right? We had a goal here to get that pool open. We've had a lot of problems with the pool over the last couple of years and as, as Jason Harms was up here probably two or three times through the winter months to give us updates, that pool opened on time on Saturday. I think it, I think at 10 o'clock it, it opened. So what a success to get that open for the residents. So I appreciate all the hard work. The pool, starting with Jason Harms and, and down, did deliver that because it, it was, it was, it was a lot to do to deliver that pool on time and a credit to them for getting it done. I know it's already been mentioned, but you know, Music on the Lake starts. I think Linda mentioned it already, I won't belabor, but it's, it's 7 o'clock. We've got 10 of them coming. Last year was a little bit of a tough year with rain, but hopefully this year we'll, we'll get them all in. They're, they're just fantastic. Thousands come every year. I, I think the best part of it is we got a couple of generations now, people who have been coming for more than 30 years of these, these, these concerts on, in Veterans Memorial Park. So it's a great time, come out and enjoy it. 7 o'clock down at Memorial Park. And so with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night.